I have a full council, I'm gonna move forward with the meeting to start it. So today is Tuesday, March 1st. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And I will ask our Vice Mayor to lead the pledge of allegiance. Let me do a roll call prior to that. Luke Chesick?
Here.
Jimmy Tarlo?
Here.
Jared Stoffes?
Here.
And we have a wonderful staff, sorry, Mr. Kamali and everybody else. And I'm here, so we have full forum. So Jimmy, can you lead the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy, so much. And we have a pretty exciting meeting, including appointing members of the Art Commission. So it's definitely exciting and news about the levy. So a whole full entire meeting. So I would like for us to move to item number two, review of the agenda. Mayor and Council will review the agenda. Jimmy, can you please do a read through of the agenda, council members? Let us, let me know if there's something you need to add or delete from the agenda as presented. Go ahead, Jimmy.
One, call to order. Two, review of the agenda. Three, announcements. Four, public comment. Five, update on the levy project. Six, presentation of Public Art Project Art Magnet. Seven, appointments to the Mount Rainier Arts Commission. Old Business Discussion Vote on Next Steps for Spring Park. Opera Discussion and Vote, 15 minutes. Resolution on Hazard Pay. Ordinance Budget Amendment. Vote Approval Minutes. Could you go back to, Jeremy, could you go back to the beginning? Okay, thank you, that's all. That's it.
Thank you, Jimmy. Council members, is there anything to add or delete from the agenda? If not, I was for you guys to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved?
Seconded.
So it's been properly moved and seconded, any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. You see, less than five minutes. All right, so Mayor and Council Members' Event Announcements. So I'm gonna start with Luke, Jared, and Jimmy. Go ahead, the floor is yours, Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to announce. We are gonna have a Food Forest Cleanup on Saturday, March 12th. So if you're around Saturday, March 12th, I think it's gonna start at 11:00 AM. But we'll be going for a few hours there. Our goal is to clear the brush that is sort of the invasive vines that are in the forest walk that connects the Food Forest to Rainier Avenue. The snow that we had over the winter helped squish a lot of that down and it's a good time to clean it up, so that's Saturday, March 12th. The native plant network is taking off a bit. We've been able to get everybody who's on the network into the Google Maps. So we're gonna be sending an email out to folks who are members of the native plant network, notifying them of that, giving them a link to the Google Map that we've created. But the native plant network signs that Tory Partridge helped design, those are taking a little bit of time to get printed because of supply chain issues that H&amp;W, the printer here in Mount Rainier, is experiencing there. So it's gonna be some time before we have those ready. But the demo sign looks great and so that's gonna be really nice to have around the town and people's yards. Thursday, March 24th, the Sierra Clubs Maryland Chapter is meeting again with the subgroup that I lead to take our native plant network idea and build a native plant and wildlife corridor across the entire state. So trying to get other towns to copy the legislation we've done and figuring out other ways to make sure folks are prioritizing native plants across the state of Maryland. So if you'd like to join us for that, 8:00 PM on March 24th is our next meeting. You can email me at lchesick@mountrainiermd.org and I will get you the link for that event. And I think that is it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Luke. And to add to your report, the sign has also been featured in the highest bill wire. So we've been getting a lot of good publicity along with the work that, it's beautiful. So if you haven't seen it, check our social media, it is there. I mean, she's ridiculously talented, so I'm glad she works in collaboration with us. Go ahead, Jared, followed by Jimmy.
Just a reminder to everyone that tomorrow, March 2nd, at 7:00 PM, that's Wednesday, is the last of three candidate interest forums during the Mount Rainier Board of Elections. So if folks want to, are interested in running and wanna ask the Board of Elections questions about the process, there is that meeting. You can find it by going to the city's website and be able to log on to that Zoom. And just a reminder on that point, for, the deadline is Monday, March 14th at 4:00 PM. That's the last day to file a candidate packet at City Hall. Information, again, you can find that on the Mount Rainier website for the special election for this May. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Jared. Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Just one quick announcement. The city's reinvigorating its CERT committee. CERT is the Community Emergency Response Team and basically educates and trains volunteers in basic disaster response skills. It was very active during COVID stuff in terms of distributing food, also in terms of issues about when there's a fire and helping out for people who are, you know, have, you know, lost their, finding places for people to live, working in the social work. Anyway, we're doing that. If anybody's interested in joining the CERT team, put your name in the chat or sign up on the website. There's also lots of great training, free training that we're gonna, you know, announce if people can attend to. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jimmy, and thank you for leading those efforts. It is definitely essential because in case of an emergency, they're a support team to both PD and our Social Service Coordinator. So I have a couple of them. I'll start with one big one. Mount Rainier Day Celebration is gonna be coming back this year. Parade, vendors, music, entertainment, it's coming back. So we're really excited to have it. We have been in a little bit of hiatus because of COVID. It is the day that we celebrate, we celebrate the city. And it'll give us a time to also to interact with our neighbors. Both neighbors have been here for a long time and they have recently joined. So it's gonna be the second Saturday of May. The parade lineup starts at 10:00 AM and it goes through the city. Both War I, War II, the North and the South, and it finishes on Perry. So that's exciting news. The other thing is like, the police department, through our Social Service Coordinator, Ms. Diaz in the city, are hosting the Social Security Administration. They're called, well, I was reading this Spanish version, my apology. The workshop is called Social Security 101. It is virtually. The workshops will be held both in Spanish and English at different times. So if you have questions about social security, how do you should file Medicare, disability survivors and all of that, they will be available. It is virtual and you are welcome to join. If for any chances you don't have internet access, you could also reach out to Ms. Diaz. It's dias@mountrainiermd.org. And we'll be setting up the Police Community Room to allow people to also view the workshop from the police station if that is an easier route for people to do. All right, the egg hunt is also back. Exciting, right? We have a lot of exciting things coming back this year. So mark your calendars. The egg hunt will be April 9th at the Nature Center. More information coming. If you do go to the City of Mount Rainier Facebook page and social media, as well as our regular page, webpage, information is there. So last but not least, we are having a food distribution this Thursday. We managed to have two COVID-19 test kits and face masks distribution. And we're looking forward to having, I believe, three to four more. Information's gonna be coming forward. This is for Mount Rainier residents. So this Thursday, we are gonna be COVID-19 test kits as well as face masks. And at the same time, we are working on three other locations so that way you could get your hands on this. It's usually one per household and we have a variation of masks from N95 to, you know, a fabric mask as well and hand sanitizers going on. So please make sure that if you need anything, we are gonna leave some with our Social Service Coordinator. If you're a senior and cannot get to the locations, so that way you could also reach out to her. And then we're working between the city to make sure we're able to provide that to you. Last but not least, to the businesses, please remember, the city has put money aside for the ARPA funding, the registration to apply if you're a Mount Rainier business. It is open. You could come to City Hall to pick up an application. It's also on our website, but we're trying to make sure we're also helping the cities. And the scholarship for Mount Rainier Youth for Education, the information's gonna be coming up in the next, by the end of the week, we should have a calendar out and the application out. So if you're a high school student, college student, grad student that is living in the city of Mount Rainier or like raised here in the city of Mount Rainier, you could apply for our scholarships. This will be our fourth year. And you also, as residents, get to hear the stories on how these scholarships have benefited the youth of Mount Rainier. So I will stay at that. But please make sure you look into mountrainiermd.org webpage. The city is gonna be putting two years' worth of calendar events in it. We'll be representing this on the next work session. And we're asking all of our committees and obviously all of our council and staff to make sure they provide any dates of information they have so that way we continue to populate our calendars so you're fully aware of what events and meetings are happening in the city and that way you could participate. Okay, so that is, that is my short list of announcements. So thank you, guys. So I will move it up to item number four. And thank you, council members and staff, for all the work that you do because I know you guys are really, really busy. It's public comment. So we will be opening the floor. For the residents, please say your name, your block number. You have three minutes that you could speak. If you're representing a group, the group has to be here or you have to submit us a letter that you're the representative to speak on behalf of the group. And you could speak for five minutes. And then, and in doing that, the rest of the team forfeits time to be able to speak. This is an opportunity to speak on items that are not on the agenda. If they're the agenda, then I will ask if you guys could please hold your comments until the item is addressed unless you're not gonna be here for that. But, so I'm going towards to the chat. If you need to speak, please put your name there and I'll call upon you. And Jared, can you also check if anybody on Facebook has any comments that they need to address? Okay, Sharnet, do you need the floor? I could give you the answer. The answer is part of like the funding that we have requested.
Anyway, you read the question too.
Yeah, let me answer. In the answering, I will read the question. The question was, does the fence was part of, I'll read the whole thing. But Sharnet, do you want me to read it or do you want the floor? Okay, hearing none, I'll read it. "Good evening, please tell Vice of Richardson Park made the list for upgrades to equipment and fencing. Also, residents will be able to renew parking permits for 3,500, 3,700 Perry. We have seen more commuters parking on 36 and 37 blocks. Thank you." A quick answer to that one. We actually applied to be in the governor's budget. So we're waiting for that budget to be approved. And part of like, part of the things that we're planning to do for Richardson Park will be a fence. Mr. Kamali or anybody in your team, do you have the answer for renewal parking permits? In general, when is the deadline?
No, Mayor, I have to look into that. Almo is not on the call and I can, I can get back to her tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kamali. So Sharnet, we'll put it out all over the social media and we'll send you an email as well, okay? But I know, I know it's coming and I think it's usually around right after the, if I'm not mistaken, it's like usually around the time right after the business licenses that was just on the 28th. So we'll reach out to you, Sharnet, to give you the information, okay? All right, perfect. Do you need the floor for anything else, Sharnet? I'll go ahead and grant it for you. Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so I'm hoping I cover everything you need. All right, so no comments from Facebook. It says John would like to speak. John, is this an item that's gonna be discussed on the agenda? Okay, thank you, Sharnet. Is this an item that's gonna be discussed on the agenda or is it an item separately?
Can you hear me?
I could hear you, John. John, first, last name and block number and street.
My name is John Patti and I live at 3209 Shepherd. And I think you just asked me a question about whether what I had to say was in relation to an agenda item. It is in relation to an agenda item, the old business about Spring Park. I don't know exactly what the council is voting on, so it's a little difficult to comment. So what I'd like to do is keep my comment brief. I wanna be respectful of people's time and move forward. But what I would...
I don't know if it's just me, but you're cutting off completely.
I lost, John, I lost you too.
Can you hear me now?
John, I can't, we can't hear you.
John, we cannot hear you.
Is that there was a very, I think, and efficient...
We couldn't.
Okay, I'll keep trying.
You cut out.
I can hear you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well.
Okay, John, if you want, you could reconnect. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mayor.
I was like, please don't tell me, like Zoom is attacking me already again. Okay, so, okay, so, yeah, John, reconnect because it's like completely broken off. We couldn't hear much of what you're saying. If this is an item on the agenda, we could present it and then you could speak on that item there. Usually I try to make sure the public comment, it is in reference to things that are touching the agenda unless you're not gonna be there and you need to say it. But if you're gonna be there, then just discuss it at the agenda item if possible. That goes for everybody. Anybody else that we just... Go ahead, Luke.
Sorry, I heard one of John's questions, which was the agenda item on Spring Park. And just for, if John can still hear us, because I see he's still there. Staff is presenting some costs about the work that the Tree Commission recommended we do. And so we just have to discuss that and sort of figure out next steps on that project. So that's why there's a vote there. Whether we actually vote or not, that's, you know, we'll discuss that later. But we gotta, we gotta let staff tell us what they found first. So that's the, Mayor, and please add anything if I'm missing anything.
No, that, that's it. And I'm hoping, no, John typed in the chat, he said, sorry, understand. Oh, my apologies, this is a personal message. John, oh, thank, I just wanted to make sure you could hear. I said, now we're repeating like when the agenda item is there. Okay, thank you, John, and thank you, Luke. I don't think you missed anything. It's just like more information. We usually put the discussion and vote if it's something in case we need to vote on something. It has been advertised that we're gonna vote on an item on the agenda, okay? All right, so seeing there's nothing on Facebook and also nobody else in the chat, I will say we're gonna be moving on to presentation update on the levy project. So we do have members of the levy project from the Preacher just County Department of Public Works and Transportation with us. I wanna say thank you. We did have a walkthrough with Mr. Kamali, the Tree Commission Chair, and Rosio a few weeks back. And we asked them if they could please join us to update the community where we're at and if we have any questions. So thank you for being here. So I will see the floor to you. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at with this levy. It's looking pretty nice. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, it's okay, Andy.
My name is Elizabeth McKinney. I'm the Construction Manager for that project. I just wanted to start, we're winding, trying to wind this project down by the end of spring. Just to update where we at, where we're at in construction right now. I will start at the intersection of 34th and Allison Street. Right now, we're scheduled to put in, there's two inlets that need to be replaced there. And then we can finish our curb and gutter in that, at that intersection. Also, on 34th Street, we need to do some paving. The paving will, for the entire project, including on top of the levy, which is the armoring, which most people refer to as a trail, but it's the levy armoring. That, all of that paving will be done when weather permits, which is 40 and rising. So we have it scheduled for the end of the month of March, beginning of April, as weather permits. Moving from that intersection into the levy portion of the job, we are now currently topsoiling. You can see them putting new dirt and seeding, which is the permanent seed that will go down, that will grow. So we're bringing it up to the final elevation and topsoiling along the levy. All the levy walls are done. We do still have fencing. There are pieces of fencing that need to be placed along some of the levy walls that we're waiting. Everybody is experiencing those supply chain issues. So we're waiting for some of that fencing to come in, the black powder coat fencing along some of the levy walls to fill in the gaps that you may see that we have kind of closing with temporary fencing. Also, at the corner of 30th Street, we've got some work that's going on that we're doing for WSSC. This should be their last week working at that intersection. I know we've gotten some complaints as far as that contractor coming in, working too early and we have... Regarding, you know, that, that noise ordinance. So, but this should be their last week and they should be wrapping up that intersection this week. That's it in a nutshell, I think. If you have any particular specific questions regarding a specific spot within your city limits that I need to address, just feel free. I don't have, you know, any other, that's just an overview of what we're doing now.
I have one question.
Sure.
Mayor? I'll, I'll start. So I had one question on, we called a rundle on our side. It's Allison's on the Bedwood side. So on the, and I just something, on the north side of a rundle, is it gonna be a walk? Because there's a kind of a pump in the middle of that, probably around the 3,200 block. And I'm not quite sure. And, and people are gonna be parking on that side because I know some resident, you know. So what is, what is gonna be on the north side, the north side of the road?
Yeah, we've discussed that in our progress meetings. It was brought up to us by DOE. That specifically where that is, that's a cleanout for the levy. So it's put in per FEMA standards. Sixty is above that concrete area is not a sidewalk. It's a flash pack for when or if the levy overflows. Those, it overflows the walls and the water splashes there. Now, there will be another project coming, the DOE Green Street Project. And we are coordinating with them. There should be other, kind of working out of the sidewalk that goes there. But that area that's shown where that pipe is sticking up is not a walk, is not a sidewalk.
Parking will be on that side of the street? Parking will be on which side of the street? Parking will be on the south side.
We don't, we're, once the, we're done with the project, we don't, we're not, we're gonna put the parking that was existing there will go the way it was when we started.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you, Jimmy. Luke, go ahead, the floor is you, followed by Jared.
Thank you. Are you able to comment a little bit? Well, first off, thanks for coming in and joining us. But are you able to comment a little bit on the Green Street Project and when that's gonna start or is that in a whole nother division?
Yeah, that's a whole nother division. But I do know that they're at their, in their final design push. We do have a representative from DOE who's, who attends our progress meetings. So they're still in the final design phase. They still have to, you know, get their bid documents together and fit it out. So I'm, I'm not sure of the exact date. But, I mean, if you like, we can, I could check and I could email you what their projected date is as far as bidding it out. But I don't have it right in front of me right now.
That would be great. You can get it to Mr. Kamali and he can get it to us.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I wanna make sure to point something out. Mr. Kamali and Director of Public Works, Rosio, they're both attending, I believe it's like every other week, the meetings as well on behalf of the city. So they're part of, that's one of the things that we requested and, you know, they were very gracious to say, yeah, like your team could be part of it. So that way they could take a more like, unhandsome approach to be up today on what's going on to the levy to best be able to keep us informed. Okay, so Jared, the floor is yours.
Yeah, and apologies, maybe, and Luke, maybe you can answer this one if folks in the county can't. But on the Green Streets Project, is that, is that the length? Is that the entire, that's not the entire length of a rundle, right?
Right.
It's not the entire length. My understanding picks up from basically where we stop at 34th Street and runs...
To 31st.
Yeah, to 31st Street.
Okay, where the project...
About 300 feet.
Where the levy, the levy piece ends. Okay, got it.
Right, right.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Do you have anything else to, do you have a question or anything else to add?
No, I just wanna, just wanna respond to Luke's, you know, question. That's the Department of Environment. The Green Street and they're at the 60% design right now. And we have a meeting every other week with the department and make sure that we're in the loop. And right now, they're just working on the, on the design part and hopefully they're gonna let us know when the project is gonna go into the bid process and then construction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kamali.
Sure.
Is there any questions from the public about this presentation? Please type it in the chat and we'll call upon you. Well, I'll call upon you. Okay, nothing on Facebook?
Nope.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. Council, anything else you need to add before we close this portion or before I say anything? Let me know. Okay, so Ms. McKinley, thank you so much for coming or also replying because we do know that... re- replying because we do know that, and acknowledging the fact that we've had residents who have been very upset of like the construction starting so early, uh, sometimes even before seven AM, um,
Yeah, we had to crack down on them, uh, uh, because due to this night, so.
I, I think we're all eager, we're eager for the project to be done. I think like, not that eager to be working up like super extra early.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working hard to get it finished.
Thank, thank you for your, thank you for your continued oversight on that. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much and thank you for joining us tonight. And, uh, you know, whenever you need, uh, the space, please let us know, reach out and it is open for you also to come in and give updates because that's one of the things that most people ask us because we usually have to go all the way around to get to, uh, Queenstown. And so I think the schools are gonna be very happy to have that space done as well as the apartment. So we definitely appreciate you being here and all the work they guys are doing and we're looking forward to having the project completed. Okay, have a good night.
Oh, you too.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, everyone. Um, so moving on to the next item, Presentation and Public Art Project, Art Magnet. Uh, the council received a presentation for Operation Arts and the art projects are M A G N T Magnet. Uh, to give you guys a little bit of a contest, they are, um, they are, they are here. And if you have seen a couple of those, um, art boxes popping out around Route One, including Brentwood, um, Exchange, Gateway Exchange, Edmondston, um, that's exactly what we're talking about. So they are here to present, um, because they did reach out and say they'll be interested in partnering with us to put, um, one of the boxes here in Mount Rainier. So definitely, um, we're thinking of art a little bit different. Um, so who is here to present?
Hello.
Hello, hello. Um, we have, uh, me, Renee Taylor and China. Uh, we did send our presentation over. Is someone going to run that for us or do we have to run it?
Uh, my team there, Melissa or Jared, which of you guys is running? And also we moved to Zoom by the way, so I mean, that should make you happy as well.
Right, not a problem.
Yeah, that's a good question, but there you go. Here's your presentation. The floor is here. Thank you for being here.
Fantastic. No worries. Thank you for having us out. We really appreciate you giving us this opportunity to share some information about the project.
Yes, and, um, to reintroduce ourselves, um, I'm China May and this is Renee Taylor. And we are the founders of Operation Arts Foundation. Our mission is to develop the creative economy and we are artists as well. So we really know how to help artists, um, from the backend to the frontend to, of running a business to really flourishing, um. And our programming consists of local art gallery staging, professional development events, public art, which is why we're here today, um, marketing support, resource sharing, opportunity cultivation, career training and internship programs.
Fantastic. All right, so what we're here today to talk about is the Project Art Magnet. And the Magnet and Art Magnet stands for Mini Art Gallery Neighborhood Entertainment Tour, which is kind of a mouthful, but it really speaks on the vision of what we have for Art Magnet. Um, during the pandemic, when COVID hit us, like most other organizations, we had to close our doors. We, we had galleries where we would help new artists come out and share their work and we could no longer do that. And we really felt that there was something missing in the community, that, uh, the, the creative community had lost something by not having this outlet. So, um, we were inspired by Stacy Millrannies, I believe that's how her name is said. Uh, she created something called the Free Little Art Gallery out in Washington State. And we saw this and we were like, oh my gosh, we have to bring this opportunity, this, this creation to PG County. And we came up with the Art Magnet. Um, so what Art Magnet is, is it's a standalone art gallery space that's two levels of gallery space. Um, and what people do is we, um, we create this location and then people can come and use the supplies that are available there. Um, and they can make tiny little pieces of art and then they can also take small pieces of art that were created by other people. And through doing this, uh, individuals are allowed to share their creative story through pieces of artwork. So, um, it is our goal to encourage and help the creativity, uh, help the community engage through creations and sharing of tiny art.
And, um, basically it's a free little art gallery, um, and we encourage people to make art and take art. And we do community engagement by curating different themes. Um, so like culture, um, holidays, history, you know, whatever is convenient at that time to kind of have a united voice, but also help everyone stand out individually. They don't have to follow the themes, but this is just for something for people that wanted guided art. And we also do a reception event with the community, teach them how to make art and, um, connect with local vendors and businesses and we make a little event with that in our community.
Next one. Okay, budget. All right, so the budget for this project, um, it's generally between eight and ten thousand dollars. Um, but this budget, uh, it's not just the creation of the project. This is a standalone project. And, um, it, when it's, sorry, I put some weird terms. It's a standalone structure, so, uh, the portion of the project budget goes for the building of the structure and then the rest of it goes to, um, a year's worth of maintenance for us to come out and make sure that there are supplies in the box, make sure that there's been no vandalism to the location. Um, redo any, repair anything that might have happened to the location, maintain social media and, um, social engagement for the project for an entire year. So that's really what the, the budget and for the project includes.
Um, and just to add, we, we ask, um, everyone that we partner with, you can either keep this structure forever or, um, a minimum, we ask of two years um, for each location. And, um, this also includes marketing materials. So we'll make like a video at the end of like all the art we created and we really try to make it all encompassing. So, um, from head to toe, it has LED solar panels, so it's available all hours of the day. We have the flower bed in the summertime, springtime, and we have signage. So we really try to make it accessible and easy for people to work with. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Um, no, I, I feel like that's good. Uh, our information's up there. If you guys are interested in the current project or um, maybe bringing us in for any other sort of project, you can reach out to us at contact, um, and operationarts.com or website, operationarts.com or, uh, phone numbers are also up there.
Oh, I do wanna add one more thing, um, because I think they uploaded our older presentation, but we also do, um, food pantries and little free libraries. So we do different types of these boxes. So if you guys want different things, we can also do those as well.
I thank you guys for your time. Thank you for having us out. We really appreciate it.
Yes.
And if there are any questions.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I'm gonna open up the floor to the council. I'm gonna start with Luke because you're part of the Art Commission. And I'll like shuffle the, uh, the council members behind you. Go ahead.
No, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate y'all coming down, saying hi. This is really cool. Um, I know I'm interested in, in it. I'm interested to hear what Mayor has to say about the potential for a, the food pantry because I know she does a work, a lot of work in that area. Um, and interested to see what our Arts Commission says because I know our chairman is, is on this Zoom call, so I will stop talking because I'm not the expert and let other people chime in. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'll get through the council, then I'll call on our chair as well for the Arts Commission. Uh, Jimmy, Jared?
Uh, I just had a question about right of way for the boxes. I mean, I mean, how do you, right of way, like, uh, who, I mean, how do you, I mean, so that has to be on city property or maybe between Route One.
We're looking for public places that are typically outdoors, so like parks or out front of different um, businesses, somewhere that can have traffic and also be a public meeting place that's also safe during COVID. So that's why basically, um, during the pandemic, uh, we had to close our gallery doors. Um, so what we wanted to do is bring art to the community by creating these little free art galleries instead. So it's not really a preference. It's wherever you guys think would be best. Um, we are very open to the location part.
It really depends on what your community thinks it'll work. Um, we have one in, uh, in Veterans Park right now, which is a very open location. It's
And where? I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, Veterans Park in Edmonton.
Okay, there's a Veterans Park in every town.
Yes. Edmonton.
Edmonton.
Edmonton in the Brainwood Exchange would be probably like the closest ones to us, like right on Route One, like maybe two blocks away from City Hall.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll check it out. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions, Jimmy?
No.
Okay, Jared?
Yep, I just wanna say this is really cool and, uh, like Jimmy, I'm definitely gonna go check those out and I've bookmarked your website. So, uh, thanks for coming in and I, like Luke, I will defer, uh, to our citizen experts or other, other folks on the public that wanna comment.
Yes, so Art Commission's Chair, you are here. We definitely would like to hear from you. The floor is yours. It's like extremely quiet.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
China and Renee, thank you so much for, um, sharing, uh, your project with us. It does sound really interesting. Um, I have a couple, uh, questions just off the bat. Um, you, I, I believe I read this right during your presentation, that you use social media to help curate the, um, the mini gallery exhibitions. Um, are they thematic or is it just, uh, crowdsourced? Um, artwork and it's just like a, a variety of different things that are kind of nonlinear?
It's some, a theme, but it doesn't have to fit the theme. So like recently we did Black History Month. Um, before that, we did Valentine's Day. It just really depends, um, what everyone wants to do. We're flexible on what those themes can be. But, um, what we've been asked of so far is to talk about Maryland and then our culture and our history. So we picked different themes based off of that. But again, like, we're open to different ideas.
Yeah, and the artwork that goes in it, it's not like, if we go into, when we check on the boxes, if we find a piece of artwork that doesn't necessarily go along with the theme, we're not gonna remove it because as long as it's not offensive, it's still someone sharing their story with their community and that piece of art might speak to somebody. So the themes are really just to kind of give people a guide because a lot of times people weren't necessarily professional artists. They aren't very comfortable with just creating a piece of art without a little bit of guidance. So we use this guidance through the social media. It's trying to inspire people with a little bit of instruction. But if they, they come in, they're like, I really just wanted to share my flag. I really just wanted to share this picture of my dog. Because we have kids that'll, they'll paint anything. And they, they are just so happy and so proud to be able to share that and put their, their piece of art that they created in the box.
Great. And so it sounds like you decide on the theme and use social media to amplify what the theme is and solicit participation that way. Great. Um, and it sounds like this is meant to be a self-sustaining enterprise at a point that the community will hear about it. People will get excited and want to participate. Um, to get it off the ground, do you, uh, well, I guess, what do you do to get it off the ground? And do you have any, uh, experience engaging with local artists to participate in this project? Or is it just, uh, crowdsourced through the community at large?
So we, we have a group of over two hundred fifty active artists on Facebook. Uh, we have over a thousand plus emails of artists in the state. Um, but we do our own public relations campaign and then we have the event reception and we kind of just build it organically from there.
Yeah.
Um, and it sounds, it's all, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Renee. I didn't
I was gonna say, um, to, for each theme, we also do kind of bring in some like inspirational art to kind of give people an idea. So there is always art in there, even if the community is not quite ready to like fill the box. We, we do bring in art and we do have like house artists or residence artists who like will submit art. We've had artists and, um, working from, uh, what is it, Texas, California. We had someone from the one wheeling community that donated a hundred, um, small button pieces of artwork. So he's been one of the resident artists at the Edmonton. So there are resident artists that help us to kind of build like the, the artwork that is in there. But then the, the community contributes and, and kind of like fills it out.
Organically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it. Um, and it sounds like this is all, uh, volunteer. There's no, uh, subsidizing, um, artists who lend their work to this. I'm wondering if there's an avenue at all through this project to support local artists that are living in our community for their contributions.
I mean, it could be into the budget. Okay, you can go ahead, China, if you want.
So as of the project right now, um, what it's based around is the Free Little Art Gallery. Uh, we would love to do that eventually. Right now it's just tax donation based right now. But, uh, the whole idea is to make sure art was accessible, so we wanted to make it free. Um, but not to say down the road in the future, you know, especially during the events, they get to sell their art. We, we support artists in different ways, but specifically this project is the way for artists to give back in a sense.
Sure. I mean, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that approach. I just wanted to make sure I had a clear understanding. Um, I mean, I also had a, a question about location selection, but it, it sounds like that's really up to the host city to, to determine. So we would just figure that out on our own. Yeah, those are my like top line, bigger questions. Um, I did write down your website and contact information, um, so that we can touch base. Uh, and I can get more into like the nitty gritty, but that can happen offline. Um, and also we have two, um, uh, prospective appointees to the Arts Commission. Um, so Rachel and Ariel, if you have any questions about this, feel free to speak up, but, um, you know, absolutely no pressure.
Be aware, we have like maybe two minutes left on this item. But we'll, we'll put it, we'll put it on the floor for questions. So, um, uh, as of like maybe five more minutes, they're prospective and then they'll become like commissioners. Do you guys have anything to add? Any question for our panelists?
I don't have any, uh, questions. Just the comment that I caught the little Jamaican flag in your corner and got really tired in it. So thank you for, um, what you're doing. It looks really great.
Thank you. I'm glad you guys are enjoying it. We've been getting a lot of positive feedback about this project. I mean, we're really excited to see it grow.
And, um, I just wanted to add, um, because you did express interest about the food pantry. Um, the one that we did put in Edmonton, um, they fill every week and people use it regularly. So both locations have been really popular within the community. So, um, we definitely would recommend either or if that's something your community also needs. Um, and anyone's welcome to follow up with us, um, through email or phone number after this if they have any other questions.
All right, perfect. Alisa, I wanted for you guys to meet the council, me, the Art Commission. Um, yes, it looks, so to me, the way I see it is more like a combination between art and food pantry because it's definitely needed, um, and it allows for us to be able to create that space. But at the same time, make it a engage, engaging and friendly, uh, at the same time. So that's where I'm at. So, um, I wanna say thank you so much, uh, for presenting. Um, the other point, I know in our conversation you guys discussed, it's like if somebody has art where they're in, in, it's open for people to also like, um, leave art and take art as well, correct? So that way it's a matter of like sharing art through the various outlets. So I wanna make sure that is clear. Uh, because I don't want somebody to be like, and I did my art and it disappeared, right?
Yeah.
But the idea is for somebody likes something there to replace it with something, um, that, um, you know, that, that they also bring into, into the equation. Okay? Um, council, any other questions, um, for both of our presenters? I see none. And I will definitely put you guys also in contact. We're Economic Development Director. I know like we had discussion about you. I know you guys work with artists and you guys are looking for gallery space. And I did mention the Gateways Art, this Media Lab, uh, membership. So I'll put you guys in an email chain with our Economic Development Director so that way you guys could, uh, touch bases, uh, with that collective as well. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, perfect. And thank you so much for coming tonight and we'll, we'll follow up with you guys as well. Okay?
Thank you. Guys, have a great evening. Enjoy the
Perfect. Thank you.
Bye.
I seem to be having perfect. Have a good night, okay? Okay. Um, I seem to have a delay on one of my computers, but all right, perfect. Moving on to the next item, Appointment to the Mount Rainier's Art Commission. Mayor and Council will discuss and vote on the appointment of Ariel Davis and Rachel Weaver to the Mount Rainier's Art Commission. So I'm gonna see the floor to Mike to introduce the both nominees, um, to the council. And I do, they're very friendly faces. I know And I do, they're very friendly faces. I know them. So go go ahead, Mike. The floor is yours.
Sure, thank you. So Council, I bring forward for your consideration, two prospective appointees to the Arts Commission, Ariel Davis and Rachel Weber. They both have very interesting, well rounded backgrounds in arts administration. I like that their expertise would bring a mix of both art makers, business people and arts administrators to EMRAK. I think that that would really help to advance our work in a positive and efficient direction. Their resumes both illustrate a deep passion for the arts, resourcefulness and an entrepreneurial nature, which I know is important for this group. And they're both new residents to the community, eager to volunteer their time. And I feel like that should be encouraged and rewarded and we're eager to bring them on board in informal discussions. They've both been very enthusiastic about the work of the Arts Commission. And I think that they would be really great additions to our body.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike. So I'm going to open up the floor to both of our nominees and to point out to the community. The city had a call out for people that'll be interested in the Arts Commission. So they both applied. We send the submissions to the Art Commission so that way they get to meet the group and interact. So I I definitely like to remind the community, this is like a very transparent, we love volunteers coming over. We put a message out and we're very happy to know that you both have decided to 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 put your names in to be the next part of the Arts Commission. So I will start with Ariel. Tell us a little bit about yourself and we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, well, thank you all so much. Really thrilled to be able to join the community in this manner. And yeah, thank you, of course, to Mike for providing so much information as we've begun this journey together. I moved to Mount Rainier, I'm in October of last year, so I'm very, very new. But I've been in the DC region on the northeast side since around 2005. And yeah, a lot of my work in the region was based through the Kennedy Center. I've also co-founded an organization called the Arts Administrators of Color Network, which I'm really just proud of. It's grown tremendously, particularly in the past year. And I'm excited to bring, you know, my experiences in this region to the city of Mount Rainier. It's a city I've been a long, long, long time admirer of, having been to Joe's Emporium and, you know, just knowing other fellow artists that reside in the region. So again, thank you so much for having me. And I'm thrilled to be able to have my name.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Ariel. Rachel, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm so happy to be here today and and thank you to Mike for getting us, you know, onboarding us and providing all of the necessary information. So similar to Ariel, my partner and I recently purchased our first home, which was a really crazy process in the hottest housing market, as you can imagine. But above all else, we were really drawn to Mount Rainier for so many reasons. This community is absolutely wonderful and everyone's been very welcoming. But for me, it was the artsy part of the community that really made me want to settle here. And I knew instantly that I wanted to be more involved. So my background, I've been in the DC Maryland area for about a decade now, working at various museums. So I used to work at the American History Museum and now I work at the National Building Museum. And my role has mostly been in the fundraising area, so fundraising for public programs that educate people and also for exhibitions as well. And I do a lot of community based work. So building relationships with local communities as a part of my job and local businesses. So the fit seems really perfect. And I think what I love about art, just in general, is the opportunity to bring people together and to find common ground. And also to educate about really important issues in a really approachable way. So I'm really thankful for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Grace. I'm going to open it up to council. I'll start with Jared, Jimmy and Luke. Go ahead, Jared. The floor is yours.
No, I just wanted to thank both you for stepping up to volunteer right after moving to the city. It's a, I really, really, really enjoy. I really appreciate the fact you're stepping up to get involved with the community and stepping and stepping up to get involved in such a meaningful way. So just wanted to, you know, thank you again in advance for your time and your commitment and your dedication to this community. It's it's really appreciated, appreciated. You both have amazing resumes. I was, I was wowed looking them over and I'm really excited to see the work you're going to do and get to know both you better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Jimmy and.
I think Jared said, I think Jared said it all. Thank you, guys.
I know. Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you both for stepping up to the plate. You know, we're a small city and we need all the help we can get. You know, the the love that y'all talked about having for the community, we all share that. And and you're going to get to express that in a in a really big way as a part of the Arts Commission. You're also going to have to work hard. There's going to be a lot of hard work. There's a period of hard work where you've got to review. When you do a call out for artists for whatever project y'all decide to work on, there's a lot of work there. I'll be your council liaison. I'm mostly useless and I try to be of as much help as possible. So if you ever have a question, you can feel free to email me. But, you know, so I'll be with y'all too. And you're joining a great group of people with Mike and Tori and Sharon. So and you had a great group before you who got to sort of birth the Arts Commission, make a lot of mistakes, learn from those mistakes and and set up some path for everyone to follow. And I think I think this Arts Commission is going to have a wonderful opportunity to expand and make their own mark and do their own thing. And you're going to get to be a part of that. And that's a very cool thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke and Jimmy Jared as well. It is exciting. We are, like Luke mentioned, a small community. We heavily depend on volunteers who have so much experience in the fields, a lot of times even more than we do. So it's exciting because we are a hub of art, technology, green infrastructure, you know, greenery. So having great talent join us is always welcome and you guys are going to be joining an outstanding group of people. So we look forward to see what more public art comes our way for the city and start reflecting through our, a lot of our, a lot of our values and who we're as a city. So it has definitely changed the city, I feel, for the positive to see more art around the city where kids could point and walk. And that's going to be what you guys are tasked for, you know, making sure the calls go out, pick the right art and artists and work with, you know, with the project, either with the business or, you know, to make sure that we continue expanding in the knowledge and creating space for people who have conversations, but also learn. So saying that, I would like to ask Council to put a motion on the floor to approve the appointment of Ariel Davis and Rachel Weber to Mount Rainier Arts Commission.
So moved?
Seconded.
Is been properly moved and seconded. Any objection? Any abstention? Hearing that is none. Rachel, as well as Ariel, you guys have been voted unanimously to be part of the Art Commission. So whatever powers and power between us and all of us here, we are happy to have you formally join that committee. So congratulations and thank you once again for volunteering for the city. They're like, you hear confetti and everything falling. Okay? As fancy as we could make it during Zoom, okay? But thank you guys so much. And Mike, thank you so much. You and the rest of the Art Commission for the great work you're doing. And we look forward to see what other projects you guys will get in your heads busy on. Okay? Thank you. I know, Mike, you're so far away from me. I could wait for you from my window. All right. Thank you, guys. All right, Art Commission, we have a good team moving forward. Very exciting, you know? All right, ladies and gentlemen, that ends that is part of our agenda and we're moving on to all the business. Item number eight, discussion and vote on next steps for Spring Park. The Mayor and Council will have a discussion and it's open for a vote on the next step for Spring Park. So I would like to, as Mr. Kamali or Rosio, whichever it is, to give us some information. Luke, do you want to have the floor before that?
No, I'm, 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 I'm good. Just to to set the context. The Tree Commission held two meetings. One, the first meeting was to review a series of proposals from the city arborist. Not a city employee, but we contract with on designs for the park and which would be the best design to protect the exceptional tree in the neighboring property. Coming out of that meeting, the Tree Commission decided that it really couldn't make any sort of recommendation until some work had been done exposing the roots or at least discovering where the roots were in order to be able to make sort of a final recommendation and that those recommendations went to the city. And so that's what Mr. Kamali and Rosio are going to present on. So I'll turn it over to staff. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So I've asked Director of Public Works, Rosio Luturo, to to be here tonight and provide the information to the Mayor and Council. I believe Rosio is here, so I turn it over to Rosio. She will give you full detail of the cost breakdown and other information.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council and Mr. Kamali and residents of Mount Rainier. Thank you so much for everyone being here tonight.
And thank you so much, Mr. Kamali.
Sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rosio.
Yeah. So thank you again. So briefly on the project, as Luke had mentioned, we did go back and do some investigation and trying to, based on the recommendations from the arborist consultant, providing those three versions of the tree preservation plan to the city. And the most appealing option was option number three. I can always share the screen and pull that back up. But their option number three was to was specifically designed for the protection of the exceptional eastern hemlock tree at 3209 Shepherd Street. That third proposal was to place a temporary root matting over and also including a six, six inches of wood chips that will be the best option to support the tree roots instead of doing any digging and doing any aerating of the soil or the roots. So we did go based off of that recommendation and look into what those costs would look like. And I can see if I can pull this information up. I briefly made a table of what those costs were. Let's see. Not sure if anyone can see my screen.
Not yet.
Not yet, Rosio.
So un, unshare the other one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can everyone see it now?
Yeah.
We can see it. Thank you.
Could you make it bigger?
Good enough.
Is that good enough?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Rosio.
No problem. So this is the cost breakdown, what we we were able to gather based on that third option as I had mentioned. So Bartless Proposal, which they would be providing the Tree Protection Service, they would do the four feet wiring tree protection fence, which is approximately 120 feet. They would provide the temporary root matting, a double sided geotextile with a geo net core of approximately 600 square feet placed on grade. And that's, that's going to be covered with six inches of wood chips or mulch, which is about 12 yards, cubic yards for the hemlock at the Peace Garden at Spring Park, which is 33rd Shepherd, 33, I'm sorry, 33rd Street and Shepherd Street. So for the cost of that itself, it's going to be $5,500 per treatment. So that also, of course, depends on during the construction of how much that's going to be needed. The next description is that for the arborist supervision for the proposed construction at the Spring Park. So during the, it was also suggested and proposed that we have the arborist on site to supervise the project the entire time. They're doing any construction over the root zones. So that would be $7,000 and that's proposed based on the construction time. So it would be about 40 hours. And of course, that can change. That's only an estimate. That's based off of the information we have provided Matt with. And that's based off of how long we are anticipating the project to take for them, for him to overlook that project. The next option, of course, is connecting the drain line from the spring well onto the nearest inlet at 33rd Street and Shepherd Street. That estimate is $15,000. The next one is construction cost estimate that was provided by Jack Sullivan based on the concept plans. This is, was turned in with the plans, but that this is without any contingencies. That estimate is $48,741. For the concept plan from the University of Maryland, for the development of that, city has already spent $10,500. Consulting arborist services that we have recently spent on that as well has been $1,225. So that being said, I know this project with the grant, it's $50,000 that the cities that we have been provided with, but there is a matching fund of $40,000. Well, I'm sorry, $39,000. Those 39, the $10,500 that's, that was paid for the constant plan development is that comes out of that $39,000 that was for the matching fund.
What was your total, total, Rosio?
The total estimate, we're looking about $87,966. But we also have to take in consideration the time that we are now, where we have to complete this project by May 31st. So that again, the project has to be completed by May 31st, according to RDA. I did make a brief section here. So the program manager from the RDA Redevelopment Authority of Prince George's County has stated that no further extension or changes to the scope of work can be considered, which will eliminate some of the recommendations proposed by Jack.
Okay, perfect. Anything else, Rosio, before I open up the floor to Council for questions?
No, nothing else.
And thank you to our newly director of public works, Rosio. I want to make sure we acknowledge that she has recently been promoted after a period of of time, not just being with us, but also she was acting director prior to that for quite a bit of months. So Mr. Kamali, as our city manager, put the recommendation forward for her, Rosio, to be appointed as director. And so she is fully brandly director of public works. So congratulations on that front. Okay, Mr. Kamali, anything else to add on your front?
No, I just want to mention about the Jack visit, Rosio. Also, could you please inform Mayor and Council regarding Jack's visit on February 15th? And Jack's, you know, recommendation, which is the most important one, the one that we have to maintain that 50 feet distance.
Yes, there were also concerns that were brought in one of the meetings, one of the Tree Commission meetings that concerns were raised about the dimensions scripted by University of Maryland in their concept plans that they were not drawn to scale. So Jack Sullivan, we did ask him and his students to go back to the park to visit and confirm those dimensions. So they did go back on February 15th. Measurements were retaken by Jack and his students and they concluded that they. and they concluded that they didn't detect any glaring discrepancies between their drawings and the site conditions. So after that visit, Jack did make some recommendations. I have listed those recommendations here for everyone to see. Jack Sullivan has stated the following. The exceptional tree ordinance cites that new construction must be fifty feet away from the base of the tree. The site isn't fifty feet from the tree to the street. It seems that the only options are as follows. The first option would be to move the proposed seating further away from the hemlock and closer to the sidewalk on Thirty-third Street and to keep the ground a pervious surface, no impervious paving or labyrinth. The second option would be to change the concept for the Peace Garden to incorporate a seating area near the well. This might give us a simpler interpretation of the Peace Garden and turn some of the funds over to the restoration of the well. And lastly, the third option would be to not advance the Peace Garden program of the Little Friends for Peace in Spring Park and find a more expansive and level location for its desired use as a gathering space.
Thank you, Rosio.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Anything else to add?
No, I just want to say thank you to Rosio. Even Mayor and Council asked us last night in the short notice to put this one together. I appreciate Rosio's time and effort.
Thank you.
Perfect, Mr. Kamali. I'm going to be opening up the floor to the council. Luke, I see your mic completely open, so I'm going to start with you, followed by Jimmy, followed by Jared. Go ahead.
Yeah.
And before I move forward, I did got a message. We need to add more time because we have run out of time. So there's a big, I got a message.
Yeah, I suggest we add fifteen minutes.
To increase time?
I'd suggest we add fifteen minutes.
Second.
It's been probably moved. And second, any objections, abstentions? Hearing none, we have fifteen more minutes added to this item. Thank you so much. Okay, Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Rosio, and congratulations again on your promotion. Now you get to come to late night meetings with the Mayor and Council.
I look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for breaking down the cost for us for tonight. I know we asked that yesterday when we saw the cost. We wanted the breakdown, so this is helpful. I know the Tree Commission had recommended in their letter to us to conduct an exploratory excavation to investigate the root zone. And then share that with the Tree Commission. And I don't see that on here unless I'm missing it. Is that, so that would be, if we do that, that would be extra money spent? Is that what I'm?
Yeah, I think that would even, I mean, having to dig and do excavating and having to locate those roots. We're looking, I mean, just generally speaking of what services we can probably get from Bartlett. Yeah, it's going to cost more money.
Yeah, and I remember I heard anything from like, that could be another like, you know, ten thousand dollars maybe or five thousand. Or is that the right ballpark?
Right, because we would have to, they would have to go in with that air spade. So using that air spade, I know in the past, we've had to use it to locate the trunks when we had to remove the trunks. So that was generally around two to four thousand dollars, depending on how, if the utilities were, you know, in the way, it would generally cost more, but just using the air spade itself was around that estimate between two to four thousand dollars, just by itself.
Yeah, and we'd want the arborist there too, so that would be an extra cost, so it's your.
Yes.
Okay.
Just so you know, for the arborist, it would, his rate is a hundred and seventy-five an hour.
Okay, so this is really helpful for me. It makes it hard for me to think about how we would get this all done if we had, if we did the Tree Commission's recommendation, do the air spading, pay for all that. And then, you know, the second piece of this that we haven't discussed yet is that the Tree Commission had a meeting the other night about an appeal of the assessment and recommended that we go through the permitting process as well. So that would be a, you know, we do the air rating, we have a recommended plan forward, we have to do another posting. There could be objections filed to that posting that, you know, it's hard to see how this all gets done by May thirty-first. And it's, and with the cost estimate here not. Jack does a great job and I'm sure his cost estimate is the best he could do. But it doesn't have a contingency and our experience with Memorial Park is that those cost estimates are low. And so it's hard for me to see, but I'm interested to see if the Mayor and Council have any other opinion. I just don't, it's hard in my mind to sequence how this gets done before May thirty-first. And I'll hold any time, see what everyone else thinks.
Thank you, Luke. Jimmy and then Jared?
Thank you, Rosio and everybody. So I'm a little confused, I'm a lot confused. But specifically, the proposal you have, which we're looking at, how would that move anything ahead? In other words, let's say we did that. I mean, there are two different, I mean, I guess there are two different issues. One is that and the issue is the roots. So does that proposal, that wouldn't really overcome the other issues about where the roots are, or would it? And I'm not clear why would we do that if we, before we know about the root issue and the fifty feet issue? And, you know, and people have also raised. So I guess I'm unclear what this, what your proposal would, how that would help. I mean, it sounds like a good idea, but would that help us in the bigger decision about whether we can do either that or something around the spring, doing that?
Right, so there's two different issues, as you had mentioned. One is with the tree and doing the root investigation. The other option, the other is the fact that if we, if there is any proposed to the, you know, to the changes of the scope of the project itself, there is going to be additional costs, fees and changes to that estimate as well, to the construction costs or even to the concept plans that need to be changed. There is going to be additional cost to that. So this is just, this cost breakdown is based on, off of what was asked, you know, to, based off of what we're looking at now with investigating the first main issue, which is the exceptional tree and the roots of that tree. So this proposal here is just based off of how much that's going to cost. Just with this cost protecting, you know, providing tree protection services is going to cost about almost the full budget of thirty-nine thousand of what the, of what the city is looking to put towards the project.
I guess again, but what is the four-foot wire fence and matting? I mean, let's say we do all that, does that mean anything in terms of, like, either doing something like the labyrinth or anything else? Or is this just, I mean, what does that get us, the first part? I just don't understand.
The first part, it will just, this is just the tree protection service that was proposed by the consultant arborist. So as we mentioned there, he did propose three options. This was the most, the option that was, that they presumed the best option, not the best option, but an option that we're looking to do, that would be the safest to protect the tree other than the root investigation and, you know, doing the excavation and locating the roots. This was the best option to protect the tree, so we're basing it off of what that cost would look like.
So that's instead of, in other words, like if we decide to move ahead.
Hold on, Luke. Jimmy, unless Luke, you can answer Jimmy's question and make sure I have his floor.
Yeah, I can answer.
Okay, go ahead.
So just, I think Jimmy's a little confused on something. So what is, Jimmy, what's on Rosio's screen right now, it looks like, and Rosio, correct me if I'm wrong, is the, this is like, putting aside the Tree Commission's investigating the roots, putting all that aside. Let's say we wanted to go ahead with the project today. This is what it would estimate to cost, which would be a low estimate because there's no contingencies.
Contingency.
Yeah, so this is the, this would be like, move forward, the project is what it will cost. And this doesn't even include what should, what the Tree Commission has recommended first, which is the root aeration and all that other stuff.
Okay, so this is like if we went ahead and didn't follow what they said. I get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Jimmy, did that answer your question? Both of them?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So Jared, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Rosio. Well, and again, congratulations on your promotion and probably condolences for some of these late night meetings you'll be in. But, you know, I wanted to thank you for, thank you for this proposal, this, this, and this clarity. This helps, you know, we've had a number of steps with this and including with the Tree Commission last, last week. And this provides some additional clarity for me on, you know, what it would take to keep this, for this project to move for to next steps, you know, based on some of the findings. So at this current moment, I'm still reading, still digesting and thinking, so I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. I'm also going to, before I speak, I also want to seat the floor to MJ, since she's a part of the Little Friends for Peace portion of this project. MJ, the floor is yours. If you have any questions for Rosio or anything you want to add?
I'm listening, digesting and trying to put the pieces together. Thank you to everybody. I guess I never thought that the project would entail this. I mean, the grant was so much less than this. And I'm confused about the spring and the whole connecting of the well. I guess I thought those were two separate projects and that, you know, creating a peace park, peace space for people to gather and restore a public space to be a welcoming space and preserve was the goal. So, yeah, I am trying to just put these pieces together. So maybe I'm like, Jimmy, there's a lot here to digest and the clock is ticking. And also, that final figure is not doable with the grant unless there's push-in from the city. So I guess I'm just kind of, I'm in a state of trying to figure it out, but thank you.
I can explain about the drain line. This is.
Hold on, Shavali, before I see you the floor. So two things I do want to ask the staff because the connecting of the drain from the spring onto the well, that could be put aside because that's something that we say we'll do it whether this project moves forward or not. So it's not necessarily attached to this because that, to me at least, I feel like that was a commitment that we made regardless of it. The other thing to point out is the city has to do matching funds. So the grant is fifty, correct? And the city has to put the other, the other fifty. So that's something to also address. So the fifty for connecting the drainage of the thirty to Shepherd, that to me, it's, it could be in, I mean, it could be put in a separate, because that's something that we want to move forward with regardless of this grant. So it does not hold bearing on it, so that would be, whether we do it. My understanding was we could also do that if it's even a standalone with the ARPA money because it's water storm management, that could come out of that. So I want to make sure we're not confused everything together, but this gives us information on what more or less things cost. So that was, we move forward, we know what is expected. I am going to give you the floor right now, Shavali, because you're a part of like the work on this thing. I'm going to ask the members of the community, if you are asking to speak, please write your name and last name. Not all of you guys have your names as, you know, what your name is. You have a sentiment or like part of your name on it. So that way we have it in for the record as well. And a question was asked, is this meeting being recorded? Yeah, the city is recording this meeting, like we have the other ones as well. So Shavali, if you can make a brief, a brief, how do you call it, comment when it comes to this? Or do you think what I just said covered what you were going to mention?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mayor, you covered that piece about the fifteen thousand. That should not be in this total estimate when you're thinking about the Peace Park project. That's a separate thing that's Mr. Kamali and others have recommended to deal with the standing water and the extra water on the property issue and is unrelated to the, you know, is going to, like, should happen regardless whether the Peace Park project moves forward or not. And then the second thing is that the, the number one and two, the Bartlett proposal of fifty-five hundred and seven thousand for the supervising arborist, those are costs that you're going to have no matter what you do on the, on the property. Like if in the, if you also are putting in, you know, removing the bricks and around the well and replacing them with like historically accurate stone work to restore it back to the way it looked back in the fifties and forties, according to photos that we have. If we were to do that, you would need to do the same thing also. So this is, this is not like, this is a cost for doing any sort of thing on the park because of its proximity to this hemlock. So it's not just this project. Like if you wanted to put, you know, instead of this project, you wanted to put like three benches and some other place, then we'd end up having to do the same thing. And then I also, later when, before we get into other things, if somebody could also just explain to me this issue about why there needs to be somebody there for every hour of construction, if somebody comes to supervise. If a licensed tree expert comes to supervise, which is what the ordinance requires for a certain amount of time while they're setting up and comes to check in, you know, periodically on the work, then, you know, reducing the cost of the seven thousand considerably. I am not sure that, I don't agree with the interpretation that supervising by a licensed tree expert means that they need to be there for every minute of the construction. So I just wanted to know if there was some reason why it's being interpreted so in such a way where you're driving the cost up so much.
Okay, thank you, Shavali. Rosio, do you have any feedback? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Shavali, for the question. Now, this is based off what the recommendations are getting. Again, this was from the recommendations and discussions between the last meetings of making sure that during the entire project of when there's, you know, any disturbance to the soil and if there was any disturbance, you know, that there was, the arborist and myself are going to be on site checking during the construction. And of course, that's based off of what the estimate has been given from the arborist.
Right, this is what the Tree Commission has asked for. I'm just saying that it's excessive and I think the council could negotiate with the Tree Commission to get it to a smaller number of hours. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Shavali. I think to address that, as you know, if it's anything, once, you know, the air spade will determine where those roots are at and what is touched. I guess it will also determine if this is less of the contact that the person needs to be there. But I think that part of like Rosio presenting here is also to make sure we know how far this break goes. So go to make sure we are informed and not cut off too much in like last minute additional cost. So I'm going to give you guys a time check. We have, we have, Melissa, how many? Is it two minutes right now left? Yes? We have about two minutes left, so I would like to ask you guys to add more time so that we can open it up to the community. Thank you, Jimmy, fifteen minutes, three seconds?
Seconded.
Okay, so Melissa, we have fifteen minutes added to the time and I, well, all of you guys seconded, so there's no objection, so it's move forward. Okay, so we do have a message. Okay, um, so we do have a message. It says, once the arborist supervised, sending of the uh, comes to check on the work, why does the person need to be there? A hundred seventy-five per hour for all the hours of construction. If we hire a competent construction company that can follow directions when the arborist there. Does the arborist need to be there for the whole hour of the construction? The orange says LTD needs to supervise, we should understand. It is excessive to purpose supervisors watching every single minute of it. Okay, so I think that was definitely um, addressed and. And um, I think it's gonna be more or less what the roots look like and where they're at, whether it means like opening and getting done or not. Okay, perfect. So I'm moving on to the next person. Um, I have Hillary Barga, um. And then followed by Robin Bliss and John Patel. Okay, uh, Hillary, the floor is yours. Uh, from thirty-three hundred block of Shepherd. Go ahead.
Thank you, and, and thank you to the council for allowing us this opportunity. Um, I also appreciate seeing this budget because as far as I know, this is the first time. We've seen what our tax dollars have contributed to this project so far, which I, I would note is, is significantly more than I actually anticipated. So thanks for sharing that. Um, I also just wanted to go back, if you could just scroll up to that first page that you had. Um, where you had Jack Sullivan's recommendations. Yeah, thank you. This part at the bottom was the only part actually that was not read verbatim, and I think it's really critical. And it says. The program manager from the RDA has stated, no further extensions or changes to the scope of work can be considered. Which will eliminate all the recommendations proposed by Jack and his students. So, so first of all, I find that striking. And second of all. If that's the case, meaning everything that's been proposed by Jack is no longer feasible, I would suggest that we use our time wisely and efficiently. To determine an alternate approach that is hopefully in line with the scope of the grant. And also is responsive to the various, and I would argue extremely legitimate concerns of the tree commission and the various neighbors as well. Um, it is not clear to me how the restoration of the well and the adding the historic signage were originally dropped from this scope. In the first place, I recall a meeting last year around this time where we were talking about those as a piece of this. They're clearly articulated in the grant. Um, I've said this previously, but the grant itself says that research was done on how we could restore the well and, and the work had been done all before the funding. Um, so I haven't yet seen anything in writing um, or at any of these meetings on why those, those pieces were dropped. And so I just wanna highlight that and. And request that we circle back to that because those were inherent to the proposal that originally came forward. Separately, I really wanna challenge the assumption that the same amount of funding would be required um, to protect the tree if we just. Do restoration on the spring vice the uh, more extensive excavation required to build the. Perme- uh, non-permeable, very heavy concrete labyrinth that was proposed. Um, of course, we wanna do everything that we can to protect the hemlock. I fully support that and endorse the recommendations of the tree commission to. Require a permit and to do a variety of other protection measures. But, but we don't have any data on what would be required in terms of protection measures. To restore the spring. I would also argue that the hemlock is significantly further from the spring than the labyrinth itself. And that the arborist and the tree commission have all said that doing a no excavation, no build option would require a much more scaled back approach. That would arguably be significantly cheaper. So I do just wanna go on record challenging that. I don't, I think we have to be really careful. When we make assertions that aren't supported by fact. The last thing I would just say is I strongly suggest that the council honor the original grant. By moving forward with the restoring of the well and adding historic signage, perhaps some native plants, all in line with the grant and eliminating the concerns raised today. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Uh, followed by uh, Robin Bliss, thirty-hundred block of thirty street. Robin, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Um, I, uh, thank you, Hillary. I just wanna echo what she just stated. With Jack Sullivan's points. Um, I also um, believe that the tree commission. Was going to make a recommendation after the last hearing to council. Based on the new information that they learned in the hearing. So um, I thought that they were going to vote on whether they accepted the arborist's recommendations or not. So I think that would be important to consider. And um, the first point that um, Jack makes. About the exceptional tree ordinance cites, cites that it must be fifty feet away, pretty much says it all. Um, I, I would like to propose to the city council that we consider a no excavation plan. Um, if we eliminate the labyrinth and the excavation for that labyrinth. We could put that money towards signing and possible spring, uh, spring uh, restoration. Because that was, those were items that everybody in the community was for. Um, and it had the broadest level of community support. Um, there's been a lot of contention about the excavation. Um, and I believe that we could have a beautiful park if we possibly look at other plans. That don't involve excavation. Um, that's it.
Thank you, Robin. Uh, John Patel from thirty-two oh nine, uh, Shepherd Street.
John, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Yeah, John, we cannot hear you. John, we cannot hear you at all. Uh, John, we cannot hear you. Also, thank you council member Stupus for typing in the chat to inform John that we cannot hear him.
Is anybody else listening? Maybe we can go back to him. Let's see the last.
No. There is uh, nothing else. And to make clear the reason why MJ um, is giving the floor because she's part of the grant. And she needs to be able to ask questions. So she's part of this formatted team. Not because she's postponing uh, uh, because she's in favor of the project. So I wanna make sure that is clear. There was a comment saying that social proponents of this project and me Chevali are being given limited time floor. That's definitely not true. They're, they're, all of us, including council has been timed. Um, in their comments that they've made. So I ask for you guys to please be fair. And at this point, John, I'm gonna call you one more time. If not, we're gonna move on to a next round of questions if anybody else has something to say. And if not, I give myself the force since I haven't said nothing um, yet. Uh, Jimmy, you may, mentioned something. Hold on, Luke. Jimmy, you were gonna say something?
No, maybe we should go ahead and then when John is ready, he can maybe put the chat room that he's ready.
Wanna make a point of clarification.
Go ahead.
Um, what you're seeing on the screen right here is notes from an email that Rosio sent, her quote from John there. Um, that's not what the code says. So somebody who said.
Yeah.
Code, the code, that's what, all the code said is that if you do work within fifty feet of an exceptional tree, you need a permit. So then it's not, you can, you can do work within fifty feet of the exceptional tree. There's nothing wrong with that. You just have to go through a permit process, have a tree protection plan, all that sort of stuff. So um, what, ha- what, and then to answer Robin's question earlier, well, the work that the tree commission just did. It, it didn't review whether, it didn't, it didn't address the question of whether or not the arborist's plan adequately protected the tree. It addressed whether or not the arborist's conclusion that the city did not need a permit was accurate. And it voted that that was wrong. Because the city's work is within fifty feet of a tree, the city does need a permit. So now the decision needs to make, okay, so if the city gets, needs a permit. What is it, what is the work that the city is doing? Um, which we haven't obviously made a decision on. I just wanna make sure there's clarity here around. What this email is and, and, and it's not, they're just words, but it's not, actually, that's not, that's not the fact of what the. What the code is. So just clarifying that for everybody.
Thank you, uh, Luke, for clarifying that. That definitely was gonna be one of the points I was gonna address because I know the tree commission has been addressed. I know you have addressed it as well. Uh, we have actually read the ordinance of what it can and cannot do and what the positions are. So I'm glad that you're pointing out. So I wanna make sure that that is clear. Uh, the other thing uh, to point out is um. You know, the, back last year, um, they wanted to cut down the scope of the work because they didn't wanna move too much of the land around. And I'll be honest with you guys, when um, basically like when we have Jack talked about the, even the spring, even if we put benches around. Excavation is gonna have to take place to level out the space to put those benches out. So you are gonna be seeing um. Uh, dirt being moved around in this space, even if you do just a spring. So this doesn't mean like you're gonna, you're obviously not putting a bench. Top of the little hill to have people fall into the well, right? So um, and originally it was scrapped off because uh. Men, several, you know, various members of the community felt like it was gonna create more line dis- uh, land disturbance. To be able to um, excavate around the well, restore it and put benches um, around. Uh, there was also labyrinth. To allow um, ADA accessibility to the spring and to the benches. So residents could actually enjoy that space. And um, you know, almost about the same residents are, are not in favor of the labyrinth, I think, almost, almost like neck to neck. Um. Uh, the number of them um, said that the spring should not be, um, if damage excavation was gonna happen. Um, it should not be touched. That's the reason why it converted to a smaller park when it came to the peace garden. Um, and that's the reason why, because signage was part of the conversation and they, you know, there, various people said they didn't want the signage. That's why it got scrapped off. So be aware that even if the wells gets restored, um, excavation will have to happen around it. To be able to create the space uh, that, that you're seeking also, like depending which of the decades of the world of pictures. Um, will also allow for uh, for us to be able to make one change or the other. So I'm just uh, wanted to point that out. And uh, John, are you back? Anybody says John in the chat or, or anything? Because I wanna make sure that um, you know, dissolution of like a council and um, not giving the opportunity for people to speak. It's not present, um, because we have been fair enough to be able to have, I think, except for the recycling bins. I think the, the, the spring park has been one of the part, one of the projects that we have had more um, more discussions. Um, and sub-discussions, uh, and that means like committee discussions um, on, and it's been going on for years now. Okay, so council gonna open up the floor to you if um, anything, if you guys wanna brainstorm this information, you guys wanna think it through, that's fine. Um, I wanna hear where you guys are at. Um, Luca, see your screen turned on. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I know the program manager for RDA said that um, no changes to the scope of the work can be considered if. Um, and I'm wondering if, you know, what Hillary suggested about. You know, I, well, between now and May thirty-first, I highly doubt we'd be able to. Find somebody to figure out what work could get done on the spring. Do a thirty-day RFP process, get somebody in, do that work for, on a spring. I just don't, I don't see any of that happening. But I, but I thi- I like, but I think the idea of a s- maybe a scaled down, just signage and, and plants. You know, I don't know whether that would be possible, but that's, that would not include the labyrinth and maybe, and I know that was part of the original grant. So I, I don't, I just, I, I don't have good, I didn't, you know, I wasn't a leader on this project, so I don't have a good. I, I would have never been involved in the conversations with the redevelopment authority, so I don't know if something. That scaled down and soft, for lack of a better term, would be possible to still get the grant. Otherwise. I have a hard time seeing how we sequence all this before May thirty-one. That's so, that's my, that's my question. Is whether there's been a conversation of whether just some of the soft components of the plan could be done with some, some grant funding. That'd be my question.
That'll be a conversation we need to have, but they're obviously not gonna give us fifty thousand to just put a sign. You know, it's, I think it's bigger scope of work. And that's, that's what I'm sure is clear, yeah.
If we could get five thousand for doing a ten thousand dollar project or something, I just wonder if that conversation could be had. That's my question to staff.
I mean, we could ask, but it'll be five for five. So if you put five thousand dollars, we have to put five thousand dollars. Uh, so that what we need to make sure, because they are matching funds, we need to match no matter what. And that does not mean if we, uh, just to clarify. I think that's a good question we'll go ask. And to clarify, I definitely don't see them reimbursing us for all this other drawings. Um, as well. So when I make sure is there, because that was asked to me earlier. Um, and I said, um, I think that if we just do a sign. Uh, somewhere else and all the scope of the work, that's money that the city already invested and um. I highly doubt it'll be reimbursable because the project isn't moving forward even if we just put a sign. You know, or to, to like, you know, name is Spring Park or name um, address the well, that'd be like two different things. Uh, but I think it's a good question and we'll write it down and we could ask, um, we could ask them to see what feedback they gave us. Anything else to add? Look, I apologize if I cut you off.
No, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think, you know, I need to see what's missing from my perception and this may be the way I think. I, I need to see um, a plan, sort of A, B, C, D. Then things can get done before May thirty-one. Um, and if, if there's not a plan like that to see. And I'd have to know what the plan is before I could say I agree with that plan or not, but lacking that plan um. In front of me, it's hard for me to, to, to vote on anything. Um, and I realize not voting also probably sets the project at risk. But um, I, I, I sort of need to, need to see that and need somebody to, to come up with what that A, B, C, D would be. And if we, if we, if we can't come up with that or don't want to come up with that, um, you know, then, you know, we gotta look at, at, at what's next there. If, if a restart is uh, in order. Um, I'm just not sure, I'm, I'm. Again, I'm, I'm having some trouble seeing the sequencing of things before May thirty-one. Um, so that's where I am right now. I know there was a lot of word vomit. So hopefully that made sense to folks. Um, because I think there's been a lot of uh, good points made on all sides of this debate. Um, I would. I really struggle with not activating a space. Y'all know how much that's a big part of my, what I campaign on and what I try to do with stuff in the city. Um, and uh, turning away money is not something I like doing. Um, so I, I struggle with that. Um, on the other hand, I'm just having a hard time seeing how this all kinda comes together. So um, I'd like to know if there's any potential for a. Soft landing with RDA, maybe uh, that, that we could get done before May thirty-one. Um, and, and if there's a. If, if somebody really wants to move this forward, I just need to see the plan, what the A, B, C, D is and how we're paying for it. And then um. You know, if, 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 if not, um, you know, we gotta talk maybe at the work session more about what to do moving forward. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Luke. Uh, Jimmy, then Jared?
Um, sure, uh, you know, I'm not that care. I mean, fifty thousand is nothing. You laugh at, but I'm more concerned that we just do it right. Uh, and I think the first issue is the question of. What can we do in this place, whether it's a labyrinth, whether it's the, you know, uh, other kind of construction? I mean, that, that protects the tree. So I think the first thing where I'm at is that we need whatever the air spraying is and whatever. And, and that's the wrong word, to, to actually kind of analyze what has to be done. So whatever we do there, uh, doesn't endanger the tree. And then once we know that, then we can kind of work back. Well, given that, we can do these things. And you know, the tree commission has a legitimate issue that we need a permit. And if we know. What can or can't be done, then they, you know, I would feel more comfortable going ahead with this plan or that plan. The other thing, you know. I appreciate all the work that was done with the labyrinth. It seemed like a great idea. It seemed like a good thing to me. Except for the tree issue, I think people really wanted us to do something about the spring. But the spring also has issues about how does that affect the tree. So I think the first thing we need to do is, and I would be into appropriate whatever money necessary. To do whatever analysis has to be done to see what can be done uh, in terms of any kind of construction. Or not construction that would protect a tree. Uh, so I don't think we can go ahead with the plan. As Don or you advise, I think we have to go first to, you know, you know, what can and what can't we do in that, in that space. That wouldn't endanger the tree. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Jimmy. Uh, Jared, the floor is yours.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, like Jimmy and uh, like Luke, I mean, I'm, I'm coming into this, you know, obviously after. After there, many of the original plans for this were formulated after the tree commission, you know, designation of. The exceptional tree, uh, you know, which, a- and, and those things, one of those happening after the other and kind of, you know, coming to, coming to head. Um, right now, and so. um, right now. And so, you know, getting my head around this stuff, you know, for the first, certainly for the first time as well. Uh, and, and there's a lot of, I want to be clear, there's a lot of, um, you know, really thoughtful and excellent feedback. Um, you know, on, on all, all sides of this, of this issue. I mean, I, I, I can tell you for me, and I'll echo what Luke said, you know, public space in this city is very, very important. Um, you know, the, the average resident of this city is a apartment dwelling, working class person of color with no access to public space. So I think it's incredibly important, it's incredibly important for our public spaces to be available, to be identifiable, to be accessible, and to be welcoming. So, you know, any, any city-owned space that we, that we have, um, you know, should, should follow that philosophy, should be a gathering place for disparate and often separate parts of our community. So I, I feel very strongly on that. Um, I think one of the challenges I'm seeing here is sort of based on some of the crisscrossing dynamics associated with the grant timing and with the um uh, tree ordinance that was, you know, put in place after this project had started and um, yeah, again, the timing for the grant, uh, I'm, I'm seeing some, I'm, I'm seeing some challenges, you know, i- in terms of a, a pathway that works and I, I, you know, kind of coming back to this, I wanna, I wanna see something. It is critical to have our public spaces accessible to the public and like truly accessible, not just available, but not identifiable. So, you know, I, I want to make, I want to make sure we can think about like ways to activate uh and enable and welcome folks into the, into this public space in their city. Um, I don't, I'm, I'm given this, given the dynamic on this particular grant and this particular iteration of the project, I'm not sure if we have a pathway to doing that in this space at this moment. Um, and I guess I, you know, going back to what Luke and Jimmy said, I, I need to, I need to be able to kind of see a pathway to us getting to May. Um, and if not, then maybe some sort of reset on um thinking about this space. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. So guys, I haven't said nothing much, so I'm going to ask you guys to please add five more minutes uh to the clock. Because our city clerk is like, is flashing me a signal to like, time has been expired a couple, a couple, I didn't want to cut you off. So, because I know like your first
We lost you, Mayor, but I do support that.
I will tell you guys at time. Thank you. Um, there's
Selena, we, we, we lost you. Sorry.
I'm here. Sorry, I moved away. My, my throat's hurting already. Uh, so I think here Luke um said he supports adding five minutes to the clock. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you so much. Any objection? Abstentions here. Now we're going to add five more minutes and then we'll call it, um, we'll call it a day on this item, okay? Uh, because it sounds to me like we still need to think, think through all this information that's given to us and what the next steps look like. Um, the amount that uh that is in there at this point is, is a fifty thousand dollar grant and we have to match fifty thousand. So at this point, obviously, it's not so, it's not showing over budget, it's still within budget. Uh, there was a question in the chat about being overage. Um, part of the other thing is like, you know, um, we do need to um, I tend to agree when, when you guys are mentioning the fact that um, even if we do things on the well, we're going to have to probably array the roots to figure out it does not interfere with anything else and see how far those roots go. So I don't think that per se that's going to go away because it says fifty feet away from the tree, right? If we're sticking to that and that's what we're, the hill we're dying on basically, um, although like, you know, Luke mentioned, the resolution states that um if it's not done, um, if it's done under fifty, here's the steps to follow, right? At least for me, I, I feel that if we're moving forward with this, the first step would be like to bring the arbiters to figure out what these roots look like. And if there's even a concern to be addressed, because at this point, it's like we're making assumptions of things that we do not know because we haven't been able to um figure out what this really looks like. It could easily be like, you know, no roots there or like no problem there, right? Um, and that will answer the concerns from the tree commission. Uh, that will answer some of the questions that we have. Um, so that is definitely, at least for me, we're at a, we're at a hold unless we, if we decide to move forward, we need to do that part. This is like, at this point, we're making assumptions on whether it is or not. And I think all of us are kind of like, we're missing a piece of information. And for me, that's the piece that we're missing. To be able to say yes or no, do we, because in order for us to say we're going to move it down the hill around or, or wipe it off, right? Um, you know, that's one of the things that we need to be able to address. Number two, there is support for this park as well as opposition. Some people are not in these meetings, but they are contacting us as well. So I, I definitely, this is not, um, it's definitely not easy because you have like people from both ends like supporting and, and wanting to make additions um on it. But do be aware, uh, Jack has been very kind to be able to provide and come and work with us like within the budget. But um, if we continue asking, you know, for another iteration, there's no way we'll have to hire somebody else to um, to, to do this. Um, so I will say that for me, I'm not ready to put a vote forward today. Um, I want everything to go forward. Uh, sit down with the team and figure out what the steps are in order for us to be able to find that last piece to be able to make the proper decisions that we need to make. Um, and, and that will be the only way we're going to be able to find out what it looks like. And if it's a problem and this three roots are going all the way down to the other side where um, where the well is at, that well is also going to become um off limits if we are, because we're still going to have to put a fence to be able to provide coverage for either this tree or the tree that's uh right next to it um as well. So it's definitely not an easy um solution either way. Um, I, I, you know, so I will ask council if we could move forward this discussion for the work session um so that we have a little bit more time. Or if you guys choose to do a standalone meeting to be able to just discuss this, that's fine. Um, I was going to leave it up to you, but I, I am ready to to have us like brainstorm what to do. And it doesn't seem like today in this meeting, we're going to be able to solve um this problem. So at least that's where I'm at. I, I do see some information the residents are asking. We are literally out of time, so rather for us to come back for the work sessions to be able to answer those questions. Um, Luke, I do see your hand, Jimmy, I do see your hand. And I do see a couple of members um of the chat. I think I covered quite a few of them, uh, the questions they asked briefly. So I'm going to give you um Jared, is that green? Well, I'm going to go with Jimmy followed by Luke. Go ahead. And do remember, that's like three minutes.
I, I think we're all on the same page. I was just wondering if at the work session, we could get maybe a specific proposal to hire somebody to do whatever the figuring out about the roots. So we get that piece of information because I don't think we can go ahead. So maybe that's something at the work session, we can get a concrete, if the city manager give us concrete proposal, which we could then do to hire someone to do that investigation. That's my other comment. Thank you.
Another city, because there's two different city arbiters. We have Sophie Barnett. Am I, am I saying the name correct though? I will see Mr. Kamali, that will be the one doing that work if we decide to move forward. Yes?
Bartlett, yes.
Oh, Bartlett, sorry. Okay, so Luke, the floor is yours.
No, I had the same idea, Jimmy, and, and I was going to even kind of say, do we want to um, do we want to consider just having that aeration and root exploration done before the work session so that it's done and we know where the roots are? And we can, you know, we have the money in the budget for Spring Park. If we're gonna, we all know we want to do something eventually with the park. If this is the first step and whatever it is eventually we do, whether that's something this year or next year or whatever, or we do the spring or we, whatever, if we have to do that step, should we just do that now? Um, and then at the work session, we'd have that information um to figure out what, what next steps would be. We, we know where the, where the roots are. I, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't necessarily need that before the work session, but I'm just wondering for time's sake if that would be wise.
Thank you, Luke. I'm, I'm with you and Jimmy. Yeah, we definitely, um, Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in agreement with Jimmy and um, Jimmy and Luke.
All right, perfect. So um, staff, do you guys have any questions on what we're asking for you guys? We need to make sure, um, ideally that takes place before the meeting so we have the proper information. And once we get that information, we'll also, we'll share, obviously with the tree commission, we invite them to come so that they're also um uh present uh when this is, when this is happening. So we got, you know, because that would answer a lot of the question marks that we have to figure out what it looks like moving forward or not. But I think that's been the big piece that has been missing out of this puzzle. Okay?
Will do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. And um, residents, we are going to have a meeting. Our scheduled meeting is the third Tuesday of the month. So that's when we will be able to address um decision. We'll have a lot more information. Um, we'll have more information from there. Yeah. So what's the, what's the day, Mr. Kamali?
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth, seven P M. And it's going to be virtually, so mark your calendars. All right? So, thank you guys so much. All right, moving on. Oh, I'm sorry, guys. I have like you guys, I moved from my computer from my phone because my hands are in still stream, screen paint still. It's like, it sucks. Um, ARPA discussion and vote number eleven, looks like number twelve. American Council discussed and voted on food securing addition of two hundred thousand, uh, number two scholarship for students um, for the three, uh, seven thousand annually for three years. Um, and also improvements on the Miles uh building, formerly Gupta's uh building for a hundred fifty thousand. So Luke, do you need to, um, I usually give you the floor when it comes to ARPA right away. So anything to, um, add, Luke?
Um, no, I think that covers it. I can, I can share my screen and show uh everyone what funds we've already approved. And then we can talk about the, the three you want to talk about tonight.
Okay, perfect. And we could, yeah, describe what they are.
Okay.
Uh, go ahead, Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. So here is the current uh status of ARPA funding. Um, uh, for, I know there's a lot of residents who are here, um, so I'll just give them an overview of what they're looking at here. Uh, the first column is the spending category, so it'll be stormwater management, um, COVID relief, uh, uh, government um services, uh, things like that. And you'll see, we'll scroll through there. Um, there's a key at the top here. Green is consensus on a project, which means the mayor and council have voted to approve the funding for it. Um, so you'll see green in the consensus and the cost. Um, here we have decisions or information needed. There's, there's bullets about stuff we, we sort of need. We have dates, we have owners, and then we have community outreach efforts um related to uh those items. Um, so moving down to show folks what we've approved for, um, we had consensus on uh two stormwater management projects. Um, one was Thirty Third and Perry. Um, the Thirty Third and Perry project was incorporated into the thirty-three hundred blocks of Rhode Island Avenue and Perry Street cost estimate, which is down in the government services um spending category, which you'll see at the end. Um, Thirty First and Perry, that was a six hundred and nine thousand dollar project. Um, that was approved for Thirty First and Perry. Um, so that was, both those recommendations came from residents. Um, we haven't approved any other stormwater management project. At this point, you'll see me scrolling through lists that we have potential funding for. Um, but we haven't funded any more stormwater management projects except for a recommendation from the tree commission, which was for climate resilience and stormwater mitigation urban tree planning for twenty thousand dollars. So that was the only other item in stormwater management the mayor and council have approved. Um, in education, we've approved quite a few items. Um, for Thomas Stone and Mount Rainier Elementary Schools, we've approved um a twenty thousand dollar outdoor classroom for both. So you'll see that there. And as I continue to, to scroll down, we've approved funding for fifty thousand dollars for access to public resources for Hispanic or Latino populations.
That was the
That was
proposal.
Yep.
Yeah.
And there's a program there that Joe's Movement Emporium is running, um literacy through arts um that they're running and will be uh eligible for through that. For small business, we have approved a fifty thousand dollar small business assistant grant program. Um, businesses can get up to five thousand dollars to replace lost revenue for city businesses. And that program is up and running and small businesses can apply for it right now.
Correct.
For food security, we have approved one hundred thousand dollars in aid and there'll be a vote tonight on two hundred thousand dollars extra because that money is running quickly. And we have also approved five fifty thousand dollars for rental relief. Um, although I don't, I'm not, I don't think that program's up and running right now, but we have approved that.
Yeah, correct.
Next is the city-owned parks or property. I know Sharon had a question on that earlier. We've already approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do um redo that park. Um, this cost is potentially lower to forty-four thousand dollars um because we may get um funding for this in the governor's budget, um which would be great.
And a fence is included as far, as part of our proposal um for the park upgrades.
Yep, eh, equipment and fencing, that's right.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then for healthcare, um, we've approved a few items. Um, we've, we've approved um expanding our part-time social worker to a full-time social worker. Um, that cost will be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over three years, four thousand each year to have that a full-time position. We approved ten thousand dollars in vaccine incentives um for folks to get vaccinated. And then we've approved for city administration costs. We approved a program manager for our COVID funds to make sure we're staying legal and everything we're doing. Um, that cost is three hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars annually every year. Um, and we approved funding for an ARPA consultant um for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, um, and we have our consultant on the phone tonight and he helps make sure, again, we're, we're doing everything um by the books. And then we have this government services bucket, and this is what incorporated the stormwater fixes at Thirty Third and Perry. This is for the redesign of the thirty-three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue, the thirty-three hundred block of Perry Street, including stormwater fixes at Thirty Third and Perry and the Memorial Park redesign as well. So that whole block will get redesigned at, at a cost of one million dollars. The city already had um four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars in grant funding for this project. So this will allow this project, including the Perry Street um redesign to, to get done in one fell swoop. And that means we have allocated two point six million and we have two point eight million um in remaining unallocated funds at this point. And Mayor, I can take you up to the items you want to vote on next, if that's where you want to go.
Uh, yes. Um, is there anything you guys want to add as an update so that way Luke um fixes it right now? Because what we're doing um is making sure that we have a transparency conversation in each of the meetings. So people are aware where these projects are at. And if they have questions, they go ask them. Um, any update from anyone?
I have a, a point of this classification.
Yes, Jimmy, go ahead.
Just, uh, I know Mr. Heml is, I just want to uh mention uh that we, we put, we appropriated, we didn't appropriate any money for Joe's Movement Emporium. We appropriated money for uh uh access to public resources for Hispanic, Latino populations, which uh, you know, Joe's or any other, you know, entity within Mount Rainier could apply to, but it's not like, we're not allowed to do something for any specific business in our city.
Thank you.
On the record.
Thank you so much for clarifying. Yeah, when I mentioned that, it, it was just to address that it was an interest for nonprofits to do, you know, for one of the profits to do that, but it is open bidding uh for, and one nonprofit that, you know, whoever applies, um, it is in the hand of our, of our team to make sure that information is put forward, then um we will vote um towards that. Okay? Thank you for clarifying that. Um, anything else? Uh, Jimmy, Jared? I mean, sorry, Jimmy or Jared?
Uh, no, no, I don't.
Uh, Mr. Kamali, thank you. Mr. Kamali, what is the deadline for the businesses to apply?
Well, for the small businesses is uh March eighteen. And so far, I would like to give you an update on that. We have received ten applications. Nine of them, we are, uh, we already made We have received ten applications. Nine of them, we are, uh, we already made decision for three of them that, uh, they're getting the five thousand dollars. So fifteen thousand dollars of that fifty thousand dollars is gone, and, uh, we're reviewing six more applications. So we're looking at the total of forty-five thousand dollars. Hopefully, if this six people can get the approval, go through the requirements. And for nonprofit, uh, organization, the fifty thousand dollars, it's, the deadline is March fourth, which is, uh, next, well, this Friday, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And we have not received any proposal yet.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. So for the April meeting legislative session, we are going to bring forward all the people that are going to be awarded. So we officially, um, um, award them, uh, the money because, okay? So, um, Melissa, make sure it's on the agenda. Mr. Kamali and Council be ready for, uh, the April, uh, meeting to be able to hear who the awardists are and also sharing with the community. Okay? And this information will also be out in our, uh, webpage to make sure that we, um, we make it, uh, we let the community know as well as the businesses, uh, who, um, who was able to receive this grants. Okay? All right, perfect. Anything else before we move on to the next item? I just want to give you a fair opportunity. Anything on the chat?
Just one question, Mayor. On the, on the, on the rental assistance, uh, are we, is that ready for work agenda item or were we, somebody raised that with me? Or is it not ready yet?
We need to, we need to get working on that because my, my, um, I want to make sure that we put this out ideally by April. So I know we don't have a program manager right now, so I'm going to work with Mr. Kamali on that one. And also for the schools, for both of the schools, because we need to at least give him a, a, a letter and then work with Michael, um, to make sure they know what requirements, um, are going to be asked for this funding because I need to make sure, you know, we officially do it, right? Because unofficially, we already told them, we voted, and everything's official in that sense. But that way they could start making plans for, um, the spring when construction happens, right? And if they need to extend for the summer, um, that's done, uh, before our next reporting period because that is coming up. When is our first reporting period, Mr. Kamali?
It's, uh, April thirty-first twenty twenty-two.
So we need to make sure those, uh, those items go out, um, as soon as possible. So on the work, um, on the work session, we could like introduce what the draft of the, of the application looks like, right? And then Mr. Kamali could like take it out like immediately, um, the next day. But we need to start working on that, um, quickly. Um, okay, so those are at least the, the two that you guys are going to see in the work session as well. Okay, anything else you guys see here that, um, we need to, um, we need for the work session? Okay, so that's the update part of it. The other thing, um, uh, would, um, Thomas' job is also, um, do not just to make sure we're legally and we're doing the right thing, but also, um, keep, uh, informed on anything ARPA-related to make sure he relates it to us. So if there's final like ruling or something has changed, like there's been a couple of additions of final, almost final, and we a hundred percent believe is final, final now. Um, his job has also been to be able to like, you know, consult with Mr. Kamali to make sure, um, we, um, know what other locations we could utilize this funds. Okay? Um, so seeing there's nothing on the chat and nothing on Facebook, Jared? Move them on to the three items, uh, that are up for the agenda for tonight. Can you show the agenda, Melissa, please? Or do you have anything else on, on this part, Luke?
No, uh, well, um, I had some, um, uh, comments on the, um, when we get to the vote on the, uh, the, the scholarship program that, that I wanted to make, and I didn't know if there were going to have to be additions made to this chart when we do vote and stuff, so.
Okay, so I would, um, because I have a proposal on the amount, so that's something I wanted to address. I'll tell you guys what each of them are. The food insecurity, um, it is, uh, the city being able to provide funds. We're able to provide Thanksgiving and Christmas baskets um, from this, uh, from this funding. I've also been very fortunate that, you know, a combination between CAF, a combination with, uh, other stuff have been able to provide the food. Um, but, you know, we want to make sure we're able to secure the food. Um, as you guys know, food is very, um, limited access and it's getting more and more, um, expensive to get. That's the reality, and with the latest, uh, war, it definitely is not making it any easier, um, for us to be able to access food. So this additional funding will be there in order for the city to be able to pro, uh, provide programming that, um, heavily is focused on food, um, security, and that's the reason why the extra funding is being requested. So that's number one. Number two, for, um, uh, the scholarship for the students, we had, um, we had put, uh, seven annually for three years for a total of twenty-one. I was going to propose an increase on that amount. Um, but I have, I definitely would like to hear from you guys, but, uh, I was looking into at least doubling this so that way the students will get um, two thousand dollars, um, minimum for the seven different candidates per year. Because the reality is, it's like, they need the help. And we have realized that this scholars, um, we have a scholarship committee. They have selected the best of the best representation of Mount Rainier. And the students are doing a lot of great work to make sure they represent the city outstandingly. And a lot of it has to do with also like needing the funds, be able to focus on school and be able to focus on being, um, outstanding and great. I already had, uh, one of the, um, one of the scholarship recipients for last year, she sent me a message, uh, to let me know that she made the president's list this year. So she was very excited to share, and she wanted to make sure, um, she, um, to pass that information along to you guys and how the this scholarship has been able to allow her to be able to focus and be able to take the class that she's needed. Um, so um, and the last one, uh, the Melinda Miles Building, uh, formerly Dr. Gupta, is across the street from us. This money will allow for us to be able to put it into shape, to be able to utilize it. And Mr. Kamali could go into data on what it looks like, but it's talking about as best abbreviation, be able to the green roofing, be able to put it on, uh, take any other precautions we need so that we could start utilizing the funding of that building, uh, for this. I just, a building that is anywhere. So I'm good on the floor, Luke. I see your screen bright and green and aching to make a comment. So you're on your, go ahead, uh, Luke, uh, Jared and Jimmy.
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't have a comment to make on, on these. I didn't know if you wanted me to go back and share my screen on any, on any of these items to, to, as, as we start talking about them.
Um, no, I thought you wanted to ask something for the scholarship committee. Uh, okay.
Oh, yep. I, I, if we, if we're going to go, yeah, I thought we were going to do one by one. For the, the scholarship committee, um, so it'd be seven thousand, I, I would really like to see us, um, since Thomas said that we can't do the five-two-nine account, I would really like to see if there was a way to up this scholarship. Um, uh, and I was trying to figure out what the cost of attending Prince George's County Community College was for a year. Um, I think it's around three thousand. I'm, I could be wrong. Um, so maybe like thirty-five hundred. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the average credit hour would be in a semester. Um, and see if whatever our scholarship was for students matched that. So in essence, we could guarantee a kid, you know, free education at a community college, which I think would be really cool for a city to be able to do. Um, and, um, you know, I, I, I think especially for kids who are, you, you know, especially if kids are coming from a, a background where they really need that money, I, I, they just, I just wonder if there's a way we could do that. And um, i- if we want to make that a separate item, I'm happy to do it and, and talk more about it at the work session. Um, but just kind of throwing that out there is something I've been, I've been thinking about.
I think it's outstanding. My only caveat will be like, I don't want to limit to some kids that are very needy as well, and they were they have worked really, really hard to get into these nice colleges.
Oh, right, right, right. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be restricted. It, it wouldn't be restricted. It would just be the idea behind the number would be that if you wanted to go to community college, you could go for free, but you could use it for a, for Harvard if you wanted to. Yeah. Yeah, totally, totally, totally.
Uh, yeah, so I know, I'm definitely open to doing, uh, uh, three thousand for seven, um, each of the next three years and expand. And if, if we still see the project move, because we're looking at average of college of being, um, you know, actually four to five years, right? And I know the ARPA funding allows us to, if this is a project for access in a little longer, if we be, but I definitely, um, well, definitely, um, I'm sure they'll be very happy to know that there's three thousand dollars because they're grateful as it is for that thousand, but I know they have to like supplement with various means to try to get, um, to continue going to school. Uh, so I'm definitely, um, I will, I'll be a hundred percent open to move it to three thousand, um, seven scholarships for three thousand dollars each for the next three years and, and move that number around to what, whatever that sums up.
Yeah. Okay.
Perfect. So do, do the math, Luke. You're good at that as well. Um, uh, what's it called? Uh, who was next? Uh, Jared, Jimmy?
I don't have any comments.
All right, perfect. Uh, Jared?
Nope, all, all good. Just, um, you know, a hundred percent agree with you on providing additional food security. That's, I know it's been a, a lot of our residents are, you know, have done quite well, uh, you know, through COVID. A lot of our residents are really still struggling. So I, you know, the continued focus on, uh, critical social spending, especially with recovery funds, rescue plan funds is really important. Uh, and, you know, fully on board with the other scholarship and, um, um, building support as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So Luke, you did the math for the scholarship amount? I thought Luke was like doing this like in his head, like, I was like, wow, I didn't realize he did a calculator for this.
I mean, three thousand dollars times seven is twenty-one thousand, and that times three years would be sixty-three thousand over, over three years.
Okay.
I do have one thing, Mayor.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
I was wondering if we could ask Mr. Heml at the next work session or, or the city managers to give us an update of how we're doing on reporting, just to make sure that we're doing everything, you know, you know, I, I, I mean, everything we're doing sounds great. I just want to make sure that, you know, the reporting and maybe get a status report on, you know, on, on the reporting, on stuff, so we make sure we don't
So he's here, Jimmy, you, uh, we could, uh, they could like let us know because right now we haven't, we have voted in a lot of things, but we haven't like released a lot of money. So, but go ahead, Mr. Kamali and, um, and Thomas, either one of you guys go answer our
Tom is here. Tom, would you please?
Yeah, so, so, uh, Mr. Tarlo, so, so as Mr. Kamali said, the first reporting is not due until April thirtieth, and it will cover, um, the award date through March thirty-first of this year. So the city actually hasn't spent that much money actually so far. Um, you know, we're gonna, obviously the city is going to report the small business assistance that they've awarded. You know, our firm services, but, and, and then there was some of the, the food, um, security, um, other than that. And the, uh, um, other than that, there hasn't been much moving, uh, that has gone forward yet.
The consultant, right?
Well, yeah, our, I'm saying our, our fees, you, you know, that our fees, the, um,
Right.
On the food security, the first, first batch, a bit of that was
So this will be in May, you're saying? That's fine.
Yeah, this will be, the things that you're doing now will probably be reported in the next year's report, which will be due April thirtieth, twenty-three.
And there's
Luke, go ahead.
And there's no concern at all about the, the, everything we're doing, the food, food security, everything, you have everything you need, everything's good to go for the reporting?
Um, I think that's still a work in progress, and I, I think, you know, um, some of that, yeah, I think that's still a work in progress on the first batch.
So remember, like, you know, this report is coming, I think, except for the food security, what else have we, um, unless we give, uh, the grants before the April deadline, that'd be like the other one, uh, for the business, that those would probably be the two. But we should be fine. All right. Uh, any other questions for Tom or Mr. Kamali since, um, we are here?
No.
And, and the one thing I may, if I can add, Mayor, I mean, the one thing the city's going to need to decide is, you, um, um, by that first reporting date, the, the revenue loss provision that's final will change, where you can essentially declare the whole five point four million as revenue loss, and then you have flexibility to spend, um, the money and more so from a reporting standpoint, from like, so, so a lot of, like, some of the stormwater projects, if you declare it all under revenue loss, which you're allowed to do, you know, the only thing you're really going to have to report is, is at an, an aggregate level. You don't have to get into the minutia of reporting, um, on each and every little project, to the extent that there are things that the city typically does. Now, obviously, like the food security, typically the city doesn't probably provide food assistance, so that'll still have to get reported separately, but, but a lot of these things, you'll be able to report uh, in a, in an aggregate level, uh, of things that you typically do, right? So just keep that in mind.
Thank you so, thank you so much for that. Okay, Council, any other question? Jared, Jimmy, Luke?
When should we do that? Do, do we have to do anything, or is that just like a thing that, that you guys, that, that will trust Mr. Kamali to take care with, if you to, to make that happen?
Yeah, Mr. Kamali and we'll work with him and staff because you don't, you don't need to do anything as far as the reporting pieces.
Okay.
Important things that you've done is you've approved the individual items. Now, now, um, on the April thirtieth report, um, if he, if the city declares all of it is revenue loss, like I said, which you can do, um, a lot of this elements that, that you have, uh, Mr. Chessick will roll up into a spreadsheet format and, 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 and we'll have to show what's allocated to Treasury at that report. It's okay to have a two D B, to be determined with the remaining balance. Uh, and that's kind of the plan at this point that, that Mr. Kamali and I have talked about, that if you, there's a substantial benefit, is what I'm saying, to, to taking that standard allowance for revenue loss
Yep.
and, and do it all at once.
Yep.
And if you do happen to have COVID-specific things, they're going to allow you to report separately those in the appropriate category. But, um, it'll be much, much easier for you, and, and we're doing a roll-up too, like you've seen before, uh, on a, in a, in an Excel sheet that can be essentially put into Treasury's portal.
Awesome. Thank you.
And Tom, if I'm not mistaken, that was the impact of the final ruling.
Yes, the final rule made the revenue loss change that, that anybody can take up to ten million, the lesser of up to ten million or their grant under revenue loss and do government services. And the idea of that was to simplify reporting, especially for cities and towns, um, to, to make it easier for them to report, because otherwise it is a lot, a lot of reporting. And with Treasury just came out with additional guidance yesterday on reporting, and they added more expenditure categories to make it even more complicated. So that's why even more so it's to most cities and towns benefit to just take all their ARPA allocation and call it revenue loss, and then it makes it much, much easier for Mr. Kamali and staff to be able to go into the portal and report on it.
It's me by myself, Tom, and you.
So, perfect. Um, I would like to ask you guys to add at least three minutes so we could vote on this item because we're over the time.
Don't move.
Seconded.
As we probably move a second, Melissa, three more minutes and we will wrap it up. I know, so you guys know the State of the Union is today. So we're like going against the State of the Union. No pressure.
We're fine.
It's gonna be worse.
State's fine. The State of the Union is fine.
Perfect. Uh, okay, so I will ask, uh, two things. So one, if I, I'm gonna ask, um, for us to amend the agenda to, um, increase the line item for scholarship for students. Um, to the sum of, Mr. Kamali, you knew what this number was?
Sixty-three thousand. Three thousand dollars, you said?
Yes. If we amend, we could do it
Yeah, three years, twenty-one, sixty-three.
Perfect. If we can amend the agenda to like reflect that number, and if I could have a motion on the floor for that?
Sound moved.
And second, um, any objections, abstentions? None. So, um, the amendment of the agenda has been made. Um, and at this moment, if there's no law, is there's no other discussion? Because I see nobody in the chat, and I think nobody's on Facebook. I was, um, counsel to put a motion on the floor to approve these three items as presented with security
I just
for two hundred thousand scholarship for students for twenty-one annually for three For two hundred thousand scholarship for students for twenty one annually for three years, sort of sixty three. And the Melinda Miles Building for a hundred fifty thousand.
So moved.
It's been probably, uh, moved.
Seconded.
Second by, uh, Jared. Any discussion?
Luke? Yep. Um, just for the, just to be clear for the public, so, um, with the Mayor Miles Building, um, that is for work that sort of has to be done, even if that site, gets developed at some point later, this stuff would have to be done anyways. So just so that the, the public understands, um, you know, that's, that's because it's asbestos remediation, right? Is that?
Graph.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Internal, internal renovation too, because the building needs to be renovated before we can utilize.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Luke. Is there any other discussion on this item? Are you guys ready to, uh, vote? Okay, here, there's no more discussion. Um, I'll ask for a vote against any abstentions? Any, um, any no's? Hearing no, um, hear no, no, so no abstentions, this, uh, item has been passed unanimously. Um, and Luke, can I ask you to also update your update sheet to reflect the numbers that we, um, we voted on today?
Yep, will do. Thank you, Mayor.
So Mayor, real quick, the total will be now three million, twelve thousand dollars that you've approved.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. All right, perfect. So moving on to item number ten, resolution oh one dash twenty twenty two hazard pay. The mayor and council will have a second reading and adoption of resolution oh one twenty twenty two. So this is, um, hazard is paid, that is allowed under our, under our funding. Can you put it up? Um, so this is the second reading. Can you guys move it up even? It's a resolution retroactive COVID nineteen hazard is paid, for eligible employees. And by that we mean, uh, police department, public works and code, correct? Uh, Mr. Kamali, is there anything you need to add to this? Can you go to the bottom where the amount is added? Um, Melissa, all the way to the bottom because we're right, right through it. Keep going, keep going. Is there anything else to add to it? Okay.
No, everything, everything looks good and I appreciate Mayor and Council for approving that.
Okay, perfect. Uh, Council, I'm gonna open up the floor to you guys. If there's no discussion, we could move forward with a vote, but I'll open it up if, you guys need to say something. Uh, Jimmy, uh, Jared and Luke. Give me Tarlo.
What's, what's, what was your question, Mayor?
Do you have any questions or any discussion? If there's none, we could like, I'll go, I'll do one round. If there's no discussion, we'll wait up to a vote. So Jared?
No, uh, no questions.
Luke?
Uh, just to be clear, this is gonna get funded through a budget amendment? Is that, is that, is that right?
No, this one is the one that we're gonna use ARPA money.
Okay. And what's the?
Sixty two thousand dollars in the ARPA that you have it in the table.
Okay, we're gonna use ARPA funding for this. Okay.
Okay, um, yeah, thank you for that clarification, Luke, so that will go added to our update, um, update graph. Um, let's make sure we note, uh, for next, for the agenda, if it's something that's gonna be funded by ARPA, let's put ARPA next to it so that we keep track of, of whatever it is. We knew this, but we, we slipped through that, so my, our apology for that. Uh, Jared, is that a question in the little green box?
Sorry, what?
No, because I saw you, your box lined up in green, so I wasn't sure if you had a question.
No, no questions.
You just wanted to show up in the middle of the screen. Okay. Nice to see you, Jared. All right, Council, if there's no other discussion, um, and I see nothing on the chat and there's nothing on Facebook, can I call for the question to approve resolution zero one, dash twenty twenty two retroactive, um, COVID nineteen hazard is paid for eligible employees for the city of Mariner, which includes Department of Public Works, Department of PD, um, and code as well, I believe. All right. So can you guys, um, can you guys put a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Seconded.
Perfect. It's probably been moved in second. Any objections, abstentions? Um, hearing there is none, uh, this item passes unanimously. Mr. Kamali, can you please, um, move forward with this item? Okay?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Mayor, should we go back and vote for the, um, for ARPA as well, spending on this?
I thought we did previously, but.
It was the first reading, the, oh, you, it was the first reading, so this will vote unless you wanna amend the motion to say, from ARPA funds and I, I.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, so we have to, we, we still have not, we still have to have a vote on ARPA funding for this later.
You could have it with this one. You could do, because you did two readings and I believe we agreed that was gonna be through ARPA funding. You could amend the agenda because we have had two readings for it. So I will, how about this? Let's vote on it for ARPA funding, just to make sure that, um, it's, we're covered either way.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
I, yeah, I moved to amend the agenda so that there's a, hmm.
A vote. Like, it could be number four, that's fine, because we're voting on the ordinance to approve the funding, so, I, yeah, I mean, the funding was already approved in a different ordinance, so maybe.
So I would just add, uh, an item.
From the ARPA funding.
Just if we could add an item, Mayor, just saying that we move up a little bit the agenda, what we would call this, move, move the United Agenda, the scroll it up a little bit.
Go, go to the top of the page.
Just that we have an, you know, another ARPA discussion that we approved that amount of money for ARPA funding. Since we've already gone through this and approved this, why we just add another on the agenda, an additional ARPA?
Because at this point, we have approved the ordinance, right, to move forward.
So let's do another additional item. I just proposed that we add an additional item in the agenda where we, we're under ARPA, that we approved that amount of money under ARPA.
So that'll be item number four, correct?
Well, no, we already passed this. Don't, this, let's do a new item, like a new, new point in the agenda.
Like a new number eleven.
Fourteen B. Can we do that? So be like, uh, I'm sorry, ten, ten A.
I was suggesting we do twelve, but whatever you wanna do, just better be an additional item.
We do, how about we do like ten B? So that was like right underneath.
That's perfect.
So that was attached to it. So, Melissa, can you add that to the agenda? We will make an amendment to the agenda to add approval of, of, of ARPA fundings to fund ordinance one dash, uh, twenty twenty two. Am I correct? Is that what you're, that's what you, um, Council, we're good with that?
And specify the amount of money.
Yes.
Why don't we ask Mr. Hamlet, that's all right, the way we're doing it?
I mean, that seems fine because it's, you know, you haven't gone to eleven yet, so.
And how much of the money, amount?
Two hundred sixty two thousand dollars.
So that's, that's what should be listed. So while she's writing that, so it's resolution ten B, I mean, it's number, it's item ten B. Uh, we have to amend the agenda to add that. Can we do that first, maybe, Mayor?
Yeah.
So I moved that we, uh, many agenda to add ten B, which is ARPA fund appropriating two hundred sixty, two thousand, is it?
Two hundred and sixty two thousand.
Okay, so first, we're just amending the agenda to add that as an item.
Correct.
I guess we need a second.
Uh, guys, so second, uh, so moved.
Second.
You guys are like, oh, halfway asleep. Any objections, abstentions? No, so, um, go ahead and move it.
Okay. So now I would move that we actually appropriate the two hundred sixty two thousand dollars, to fund the hazard pay, resolution number oh one two oh two two.
So, um, are you calling for, for a vote, Luke?
Yes.
Are you calling for a vote? Thank you. All right, so Council, uh, the agenda has, so we need to, one, vote, two, um, we already voted to amend the agenda to add, uh, item number ten B, ARPA funds, two hundred sixty two thousand. Um, and this will be a vote to be able to fund, um, the hazard paid, um, retroactive for our, for the, the selected staff members. If we are correct with that, already been voted, um, on it, so the next vote will be to actually approve, the funding after we have added. So if there's no discussion, I will entertain a motion to vote to approve these funds.
So moved.
Second.
It's been probably moved and second, any objections? Abstentions? Discussion? Uh, hearing none, uh, this item has been approved and to be clear, two hundred sixty thousand, two hun- two hundred and sixty two thousand, two hundred dollars for retroactive pay. So Mr. Kamali, uh, not only has the resolution been passed, it's already funded through ARPA. And Luke, you will, since you're our organizing a documenter for ARPA, can you make sure that this is added to our, to our line item to reflect this as well?
Yep, I'm on it.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Jimmy, and thank you, Lucas, well, Jared as well. All right, perfect. Moving on to item number eleven. Right? Or in is, um, twenty, uh, number oh one dash twenty twenty two FY twenty two budget amendment number, three, three. Can you put that budget amendment on the screen, uh, Melissa, please? All right, don't go too fast because I need to read what, what it is. So go up a little bit. A little bit more. Okay. So this is the, but, and this is the second reading, Melissa? Mr. Kamali, yes? Thank you. Okay, um, so this, I'll read you what they are, this will be the second reading. Uh, from, uh, from line item, uh, five thousand, regular prey, an amount of five thousand dollars to line item number fifty one oh nine, election cost for the cost of five thousand dollars. And this is to be able to fund our special elections for war two. Because it's not a regular election year, no money had been allocated for the budget for this year. Okay, la, and, and if we don't have the money, we have no elections, so you're aware. Uh, line item forty five oh six, speed camera violations, amount of a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred fifty two with fifty cents. To line item five thousand, regular pay, the amount of a thousand two hundred thirty two fifty two, fifty two point fifty. And this is for one, Mr. Kamali?
That was for the first hazard pay between March twenty to August, thirtieth of twenty twenty, the remaining balance after we checked everybody, based on the mayor and council request. So the total is hundred twenty, three fifty two point fifty.
All right, perfect. Moving on from line item fifty five or nine, message production amount a thousand five hundred, moving it to line item fifty five fifty one egg hunt event, amount a thousand five hundred. And that is because we need to have that amount, we are having the event, to be able to fund that event. It's one of our, uh, one of our biggest, um, community events. All right, so for total of, a hundred and twenty six thousand, eight hundred and fifty two dollars with fifty cents. So you have her budget amendment number three. Council, I will open it up, uh, the floor for questions.
I like to move the motion, don't want anyone else to say.
Seconded.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Does anybody have a question?
No, I do not.
No one had a question.
So Jimmy, Jared, Luke, none of you guys have a question on this?
No. No.
Jimmy, Jared?
Do you want us to make up a question?
No, but I need to like say fairly that I ask you guys. I don't want you guys to be like cheating.
You, you did. No one said anything.
We were, we were silent.
I, I, I was, it was too quiet. I'm not used to, that must quiet from you guys. All right, guys, so, seeing that there's no question, I will entertain a motion on the floor to approve, um, budget amendment number three.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been probably moved and second. Um, any, hearing none, uh, budget number three for a hundred twenty six thousand, eight hundred and fifty two with fifty cents, has been approved. Okay? Thank you, guys. All right, next item on the agenda. Keep moving, Melissa. Melissa, don't stop if not, they're gonna start asking, uh, asking questions. All right, so this is Melissa's item, and this is a vote, uh, for mayor and council to approve the following minutes. July thirteen, twenty twenty one, special legislative meeting. August twenty four, twenty twenty one, special legislative meeting. January eighteen, twenty twenty two, work session. Ferry eight, twenty twenty two legislative meeting. And all of these minutes were provided to you guys in the last two meetings. So you guys have had an opportunity to review them. Uh, so if you guys don't have any questions, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
We lost you, Mayor.
Hello?
What is it?
No, we lost you. We, we had a, we had a, we moved to, to adopt in a second and then we heard silence.
Then he gave up, you know.
So sorry, I, I, either way, is there any question regarding all the minutes that have been presented to you? Let me know. If not, let me put a motion on the floor, uh, to approve them. This has been submitted to the community, to the council, in the last two meetings, which is like equivalent of the last month. Okay?
Yeah, we did that. Okay, good. Yes, I move it again.
Second.
Thank you. Any objections, abstentions? Hearing none, these minutes have been approved as presented. All right.
I have one, uh, uh, thing, a recommendation, um, for our, for our wonderful city clerk. Um, the, the agendas are, it's wonderful how they're posted online. It's great. I, it would be helpful, I think, for, um, I know it's kind of a pain, but this is kind of my recommendation, because the last two agenda items, we've amended the agendas for votes. It might be helpful to post the amended agendas, just replace the agenda that was to go that, with whatever agenda was that we ended up approving, so that when residents go back, they can see the work that we did in the meeting instead of, the work that was initially proposed. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Melissa, um, the other thing is that if you guys could find a way to put the agenda, the minutes and the link to the YouTube all in one like category. So that was the full package that would definitely help instead of having them separated. Okay? So let's work on that. So that way, uh, in some other cities, what it does, like, it looks like an Excel sheet, with links to the various things, so that if you're interested in a meeting, you could see the agenda, the minutes and the meeting itself. So that will, we organize that. All right, perfect. So Melissa, we have voted on and thank you once again, um, for being so efficient when it comes to our minutes. Um, it's really appreciated. We have been able to approve, uh, a ton of minutes on a very timely manner. All right, I know you guys are devastated and sad. We're moving on to the last item on the agenda, which is, um, a German. You will have a motion on the floor.
I have something to talk about, though.
You are not adding another item to the agenda, Jimmy Tarlo.
Move to a German.
No, do you wanna ask something? No. All right, so there's a mo- Any seconds? I know, I don't even know what to tell you guys. Okay, we probably move in second. Any objections? Any, uh, no's? Okay, so thank you guys so much. This meeting has come to an end at nine fifty two, P M. All right, guys, so I'll see, I'll see you guys, uh, but. All right, guys, so I'll see, I'll see you guys up, uh, on the next meeting, and watch out, I'm sending an email tonight, um, to, uh, to the rest of Council, okay? Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Tom.
And thank you, committee members, for, um, staying up late with us as well. Um, have a good night.